He's not there. I've noted both the names.
Wait a minute.
Sounds like Tom.
Yeah.
Yeah. Tom, can you mute? Thank you. All right, I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Lebanon Planning Board to order on this Monday, June 22, 2020. And once again, we're doing this remotely via Microsoft Teams. And I will ask Tim Corwin to, once again, go over the rules of procedure for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Tim Corwin from the planning department. Other staff on tonight's meeting include David Brooks, the planning director, and Brian Vincent, the city engineer. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 issued on March 23, 2020, in accordance with Executive Order 2020-04, the Lebanon Planning Board is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with emergency order number 12, the city of Lebanon has taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential additional access by video, to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, and to provide a mechanism for the public to alert the board during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as the communication platform. All members of the planning board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and to participate in the meeting by visiting lebanonnh.gov/live and clicking on the link for the June 22, 2020 Planning Board meeting. Instructions on how to attend are provided on the webpage. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, all speakers are asked to identify themselves and to spell their first and last names before beginning to speak. Likewise, we ask all board members and staff to please identify yourself before speaking. In order to ensure the best possible transmission of the meeting content, it is suggested that you disable the camera on your chosen device to reduce the video feed and increase the available bandwidth for all attendees. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, microphones will be muted by staff until you have a question or comment. For people using the Microsoft Teams platform, you can unmute yourself by clicking the button on the middle bottom of the screen. If you hover your cursor over that portion of the screen. For people calling in by phone, please press star six, excuse me, star six to unmute yourself. If anyone has difficulty with access during the course of the meeting, please email us at planning@lebanonnh.gov, planning@lebanonnh.gov. Or you can use the chat function on Microsoft Teams to indicate the issue that you're having. If we can provide technical assistance, we will try to do so. If we are unable to do so, it is still worthwhile to be aware of the problems that participants may be encountering so that we can try and address those for future meetings. In the event that we experience widespread and severe technical difficulties such that we are unable to hold the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. All votes that are taken during the meeting tonight shall be done by roll call vote. Please note that there may be a delay between the time that something is said and when you hear it at home. Please be patient as we try and manage that delay. We ask that you not use the Microsoft Teams chat function unless you need to communicate that you're experiencing technical difficulties. And finally, please note that this meeting is being recorded and it will be available on the city's website, And with that, I will turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you, Tim. Those of you who remember back months ago, we didn't do a roll call and we voted by hand. With the electronic, we had to do all of that step by step. And I got into the habit of tracking that with a list of first names in alphabetical order, which put me unintentionally at the front of the order. Somebody mentioned that it might be a good idea to shift that around, so I will endeavor to do that. So I'm going to turn my order upside down and start with Tom. Tom, are you, and please say present and whether you're alone. Tom?
This is Tom, and I am present, and I am alone.
And Matt?
Present and alone.
Kathy?
Present and alone.
Laurel?
Present and alone.
Joan?
Present and alone.
Jim?
Present and alone.
Gregorio? All right, so if Gregorio joins, perhaps he'll announce himself. And my second job this evening was to appoint him to fill an open position, but he's not here. I can't do that until he signs in. So we're going to move to our first order of business, which is the continued discussion of the Dartmouth application that continued from the June 8 meeting. And I believe that the applicant would like to start this discussion with a brief presentation. So I would ask someone from the applicant's team to announce himself or herself and get this going.
Mr. Chair, just before that. This is Matt Hall. I'm just going to be recusing myself from this application.
Thank you, Matt.
All right. Hi, it's Dave Benstamacher from VHB.
Good evening, Dave.
How's it going?
Good.
So as Tim said, we're going to have a really short presentation. I think we've, all the materials have been in. We just want to go over a few things and then really open things up for discussion. Can everyone see the screen okay?
Yes.
Okay. And just to overview, we still have the whole team here tonight so that we can answer any questions. Christina is here from Michael Student Living. Dan's here from Dartmouth College. Myself and Jason Plord are on from VHB, and Phil Hastings is on representing the attorney. And then Mark Mohler from JSA is on. So just real quick, hopefully everyone had a chance to take a look at it, but we have a, we just wanted to show the site rendering that we pulled together in the last week or so to, I know that was requested or recommended that we provide something that showed the viewport looking south. So let's take a look at that.
Dave, this is Tim. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have not provided that. I don't believe I provided that to the planning board.
Okay, because I think it came in past the time you were going to send out the reports. Okay, so I'll present that for the first time tonight. And then we'll just, I think we just walk through the waiver request, the new condensed waiver request, and then just go right to comments from Tim and the board. So what we did is we took a look from the roadway heading south. You can see building one up on the right and the clubhouse and building two. So you get an idea of how the hill heads up, some combination of some proposed and.
Dave, what we're seeing, I don't know if it's in your intention, is it in the background? There's an image, but you're in the foreground. You're not sharing your screen.
Hold on, Matt. Oh, hold on.
There we go.
We're up?
Yep.
Yes, okay.
Oh, so I hit share, but I never clicked what I wanted to share. So here we go.
I'm pushing this because I gotta undo it.
Okay, so sorry, I'll start again. What we did was we took a picture from the roadway. And you can see building one up on the hill, sort of the limits of the parking here, the clubhouse in the middle, and building two that's up a little bit. But it gives you an idea of what, these are a combination of the proposed plantings that we're putting in, some of the grasses on the hill and some existing vegetation. So a nice mix to show that how it really blends in there and gives you an idea of the scale and context from the road. And you can see up here the walkway heading down in the driveway. So we sent that to Tim. He could share it with you guys if you'd like, but we just wanted to show it to you tonight. And I know that the project team worked pretty hard to turn this around quick so that we had an opportunity to show it to you tonight. So I don't know if you wanted to ask any questions about this or just something to look at.
When you finish your presentation, Dave, and then we'll.
Sounds great. And then let's just walk through real quick the waiver requests. We have two for the subdivision. They both relate to a final statement of work and cost estimates related to the off-site improvements. And the applicant is committed to putting in, you know, crosswalks, crossing the warnings and whatever pedestrian signals. Not signalization, we're talking about putting in like the rapid reflecting beacons. But we still haven't finished our coordination with advanced transit. There's going to be some back and forth there, but that's why we haven't finalized it. But they're committed to doing all these. And I'm sure that they'll be subject to the performance security agreement prior to construction. But we just wanted to, we get a waiver on these until we've had a chance to work this out with DPW and advanced transit. So those are the two subdivision pieces. In terms of the waivers for the site plan, the one we had was the trees over 12 inch diameter getting individually noted on the plan. We more than meet this requirement. We're pretty much using the existing woods all the way around. So rather than going out individually measuring these, that we're meeting the calculations just based on the trees are out there. And we're providing the calculations along the frontage. It's just for the existing woods, we just haven't, we're just looking for a waiver on those calculations. This other one we talked about at the last meeting where they are looking for the landscape islands between the parking. I think Joan even made a point that that's more consistent with, you know, commercial uses. We'd really like to prefer to keep the landscaping on the outside, to keep those perimeters nice and plush on the outside. And for the limited use of people coming in and out of the cars, it makes more sense to just put in the islands that would provide the appropriate shading and leave the, do the constraints of the site, leave the perimeter more landscaped. The next one relates to the sidewalks along the street frontage. So there's another one. We have a 10-foot multi-use path on the other side. That's more than appropriate to handle the existing foot traffic out there. And we're going to provide a single crossing point out of our site. And as I mentioned, we'll have a crosswalk there, we'll have warning signs, and we'll have the rapid reflecting beacon to help with the crossing there. So I think that one makes sense there. We also discussed last time for the fire, the minimum access requirements, including the 50-foot turning radius and a 22-foot fire lane at the rear of the buildings. This was something, again, reviewed with the fire department. That spine road that goes in between all the buildings plus the ring road really provided access to all side of the building. So I believe it was the fire department's feeling on that, that that was appropriate for what we were providing. And then the last one just has to do with where the applicant should construct and complete all design and construction requirements prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. It's the intent to open all four residential buildings at the same time for an academic year. But the applicant would like to open up the clubhouse the year before for leasing purposes. So for that, for the purposes of opening that the year early, just looking for a waiver that all construction is not going to be complete for the clubhouse to be inhabited. But everything will be complete for the buildings. So we have two for the subdivision and then these five for the site plan. So I don't know if we have questions on these or just if, Tim, you want to just run through.
Sorry, Dave, I cut you off.
Yeah, no, I just was passing it back to you. So whatever you feel.
Okay, yeah, so what I'm going to suggest, we're going to have staff comments. I don't know to what extent. Board discussion. I will then ask for comments from the public, and then we'll move on to the waivers. So, David, any staff comments to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Tim. I don't know that I have anything to add at this point. If there are any questions about any of the information that's been contained in the various staff memos or the process moving forward to wrap this project up, I'd be happy to answer those questions. Brian, did you have anything?
Hi, everybody. This is Brian Vincent. Hope you can hear me.
Yes, Brian, thank you.
Okay, I just had a couple follow-up comments, and I believe we've been over these already. But I'll just, I'll mention them one more time. Central access road, the spine road. I'm working with David and the applicant to understand the grading and drainage around that road as well as the nearby wetland, just to ensure that there's proper sub drainage for the road and that the wetland will be viable going forward. And then I was also interested in seeing the sub drainage designed for the development. And I can work with David again on that relative to potential conditions of approval. Other than that, and this might be new to Dave, but I'd be interested in seeing the AOT submittal application to DES, similar to what he had sent for another project on the same route.
Yeah, no problem. And what I can do, Brian, is submit that. And then they did have a round of comments. And then I can send you those responses to comments. The final comments have all been sent over to the state. So I'll send you a compiled list of all those.
Excellent, thanks.
And Tim, would you please confirm some of those two outstanding points, I believe, are covered in the various condition?
Yes, they are, not specifically with respect to the obtaining the AOT application.
No, no.
But otherwise, yes.
I remember reading. All right, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Tim. So turn it over to the board who has comments, questions.
Chair, this is Kathy.
Yes, Kathy.
I have a couple of points I just would like some clarification on. There were comments in previous meetings or previous sessions of this meeting about the road on the south end of the development being lower than the wildlife corridor lands. And whether or not then there would be some flooding or runoff onto that road. And I never really heard an answer to that.
Hi, this is Dave. We, I think it's part of our last submittal. What we're doing is we're providing a trench at the bottom of that hill that will collect it, and it will have an underdrain under there, so that will all collect anything before it gets to the roads. And it will bypass the parking lot.
Okay, and a second stormwater-related question too. There was a response from the team to some questions from the last session with regard to whether or not stormwater discharge from the site would increase once development was completed from the discharge that was exiting the site before construction. And the response from the team said that discharge during peak periods would not increase. Could you define what a peak period is for the different storms?
Yeah, so what we do is we look at, I think for our purposes, we looked at the one-year storm, the two-year storm, 10-year storm, 25-year storm, 50-year. So what happens is if they take a storm event, let's say it's, I don't have my document in front of me, but say it's five inches, is going to be your biggest storm in, let's say, a 25-year cycle. So, you know, there's a one-in-four chance that's going to happen that we're designing so that for that major storm event, that's the 25-year storm, that under existing conditions versus our proposed conditions, the stormwater will not increase what's coming off of the site. So it's just how we size everything on site. So we size things per particular storms, and we take, you know, the larger storm events. So we have a very conservatively sized system for these really large storm events. So regular events that happen all the time, we have a system that's, that can appropriately handle anything up to, well, including, you know, up to very large storm events.
So what's the difference between peak flow and regular flow?
It's just the amount, peak is just, you know, a certain, if you calculate, you know, the amount of rain coming down over the area versus, you know, what type of cover you have and how fast it's coming, it's that, you know, amount that's discharging to that area. So the peak is at the max amount of stormwater that's coming out of that discharge at the same time. That's what we're looking at is that peak where everything else is sort of spread out.
So you would be able to discharge any amount of water from that site, even if it was more than what's being discharged from it now, as long as it didn't go more than the peak period?
Right, we're comparing every existing storm to the proposed storm with the same rainstorm event. And making sure that we're mitigating everything on site so that the peak is not greater than in the proposed than it is in the existing.
But the total amount of water that was discharged from a storm could be greater as long as it didn't exceed the peak?
Right.
So it's possible that the water being discharged from the site after construction could be greater than what is being discharged now?
Right.
And confirm for me, I thought that the DOT permit had some limitations with regard to that?
No, the DES, sorry, yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what we're designed for, to meet the DES standards.
And how would the city or a neighboring property know whether you were discharging more water than is currently coming off the site?
Well, I mean, there's, I think we discussed from an operational standpoint, you know, we're going to be inspecting to make sure that, you know, from a velocity standpoint, we're not creating any erosion issues and that everything's stabilized. And I guess from a butter's standpoint, if there was wetlands that were abutting their site and there seems to be, you know, any increase in the elevations or impacts to their land, that's something they would see. But as we stated before, we have a pretty large underground system on the site now that that stormwater is going to be detained in. But I don't know from a city standpoint, if there's, besides our regular inspections on the site, what happens for inspections off the site unless there's a comment from an abutter?
Is there a log that you keep that the city has access to or that?
They'll have access to our, the logs that we provide, that we prepare for the state for the inspections.
Yeah, I raise it because I think at a previous session, there was a statement or maybe it was just a misunderstanding that there would be no greater discharge of water from the site after construction than before, and that is likely not true, right?
Peak flows versus volume, right?
Thank you.
Tim or Brian, any comment on that?
This is Brian.
Yes.
I would say that the way the applicant has assembled his proposed drainage design is consistent with the industry standard. At all times that I've seen, the goal is to control peak runoff. So that's measured in cubic feet per second. In terms of trying to control peak volume, that's really not feasible unless you can infiltrate on your site. And in this case, clearly the soils don't allow for that. So what they're doing is they're using detention methods and treatment methods to control the rate of discharge, which is the standard for the industry. So they're meeting the standards in both the town, the city regs, as well as the state DES.
Kathy, other comments?
No, this question that came up last week when Joe Martel from Timberwood was saying that his site, which lies on the east side of Mount Support Road, was already getting runoff from the site where the Merrick Development is proposing to go in. And my assumption was that they will have similar drainage systems of some sort designed. But if they're only controlling the peak flow, then it's possible that the runoff from that site could be even greater and affect Timberwood, which says they're already being affected without development. So I was just assuming that since there's a development going in across the road from this site, that that might also be a concern for that site across from them.
Other board members?
Mr. Chair, this is Tom.
Yes, Tom.
Kind of a follow-up to that because this is not unlike what we're talking about as far as the traffic. And that is one development doesn't make a problem necessarily. Peak flow and volume remaining relatively same. But as we continue to add additional developments, and we've got two before us currently, are we looking at the combined volumes that are going to be displaced from those properties or just individually each property itself? Seems like when we do traffic studies now, we're looking at what's going to be the combined, or at least the board has asked for, what's going to be the combined problem of all of these in the traffic studies as opposed to each individual one property doing their own traffic study?
Brian, I'll come back to you again.
Well, I would say that that would be an interesting exercise. I guess what you'd have to do is assess each lot relative to any given storm with the existing conditions and with the proposed conditions and see how the, there's a hydrograph that gets generated with each of those analyses. And you'd have to figure out where the hydrographs peak relative to the storm duration. So if it's a 24-hour storm and the hydrograph peaks on one lot at hour eight and on another lot at hour 10, and then another lot at hour 12, then you would analyze that whole condition relative to the ultimate receiving, either culvert or stream or wetland or wherever the point of discharge might be for the combined developments. You'd have to look at the watersheds and ensure that they would all go to the same direction, which would be another interesting exercise, just to see if it's flowing down the same sort of ditch or path or wetland or what have you.
So, this is Tom again. Would that be an unreasonable request from the board for that type of study to be done?
Sorry, this is Dave. Can I make a comment real quick?
Sure.
So just to, just because it's not apples and oranges, when we're talking about the traffic, what we're talking about the cumulative makes sense where you're saying each lot on its own has a little bit of impact, but when you put them all together, it eventually leads to a bigger amount. But when we're talking about stormwater, we're mitigating on site, unlike traffic where you have to mitigate, you know, at a signal or something. For each one of these sites, we're mitigating on the sites to reduce the cumulative impact. So each site is putting in lots of infrastructure that's, you know, mitigating things on the site so that we don't get that cumulative. So it's a little different than how you would look at the traffic where the traffic can have a certain amount of impact, but if it doesn't reach a trigger, you don't need to mitigate it. We're mitigating all the stormwater. But I mean, just.
This is Tom again. I'd like to ask our city engineer to speak to that. Brian, what do you think? Is that accurate? I mean, this is still a liquid flow process.
Yeah, I would say that that's, so the purpose of doing the existing runoff calculations is so that you have the basis to compare your proposed design to. So that's done for each project, and those numbers are compared. And that's how you're controlling discharge. And like Dave's saying, if you have a traffic situation, you can't, you know, you've got to use public streets typically to control flow. You don't have signals at the exits of the developments or have timing discharge requirements for when you leave your house or apartment. So I would say that this is the industry standard. So I, I would say that this is the industry standard that they're applying to this project and it's satisfies at least the city regulations.
Chair, this is Kathy. Can I jump back in?
Certainly.
So like I said, at the last session, the understanding was that the requirements were that the discharge after construction could not exceed the discharge before construction. And now we know that's not true. So then we have a one culvert at the northeast side of this development, which is large enough to handle the runoff and discharge now. But since the discharge after construction could be greater, how do we know that that culvert is big enough? And if it isn't, does the city have any legs to stand on to come back to the developer and say, you increased this discharge, you need to enlarge this culvert?
Brian, I'll come back to you.
Sure. So the nuance we're talking about here is volume versus peak flow. If, if the calculations that the applicant has done are correct, which I suspect they are, then the peak flow will be controlled to the point where there'd be zero impact on any given discharge point, including a culvert. In other words, the culvert, if it flows half full today, will typically flow half full maximum after the development's complete. The difference is that if it flowed for, say, six hours before the project came along, it might flow for 10 hours after the project comes along to take care of that discharge of additional volume. But the culvert would still stay at a peak of a half a culvert full. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
That's a very good, helpful explanation. Tom, does that clarify for you?
Well, yeah, I, that made, that makes sense. I, I do worry with the, the increase of numbers of storms that we've had in the last past three years. I'm using three years because obviously this spring has not been like the last two springs. We haven't just had 25 year storms. We've had what people are referring to as hundred year storms. And so I understand that the peak bar, the, the volume dispersed is spread out of a longer period of time. But that seems like that also gives more opportunity for those additional developments to also spread out that flow. And so eventually where one might have cleared before the next one was released, now they're all going to be releasing over a longer period of time. So there's still going to be an increase, at least in my simple understanding, over a longer period of time, an increased volume from all of them. And so I trust our engineer. But I would have to see it in operation, I guess, to really believe that it's not going to increase the amount of flow down through there, even if it's spread out over a longer period of time.
If, if I might, so in my mind, we've got Dartmouth and then potentially Saxon beside them going down the same route and then crossing underneath the street in a culvert into the wetlands. I think that's correct. And then potentially Braverman joining in a similar fashion with Timberwood. Is that, does that represent what we're talking about, Brian?
That sounds, that sounds accurate. Dave, would you agree?
Yeah, I'd agree that, but they're not crossing in the same areas.
Well, they're not crossing the same, that's a good point. All right. But they're not commingling further up. They're crossing two and two in different areas.
They're going to be, they're going to be 1500, yeah, we're probably 1500 feet apart where they're going to be crossing the roads.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
And just to reiterate, I know we talked about the larger storms. We're, we're designing for the hundred year storm for detention. So understood that, you know, there's, the storm events are getting larger than they used to be. And we've adjusted our, our rates for that purpose.
Other board members? All right.
I have a question, Chair.
Yes, is that Kathy again?
No, it's Monroe.
Oh, Joan, yes, Joan.
I was wondering on the, 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 it wasn't a photograph. I guess it was the artistic rendering that was shown a little while ago. Could we see that again, please? Is, is, in making this, did you take the actual vegetation that's on the site now and then just put the buildings in or is this vegetation not accurate?
The ones here are the, the ones that were planting.
Okay.
So those are the proposed trees. I guess anything that would be in the background is sort of rendering. But we, they took our site plan. They worked with our landscape architect. He sent them the photos. He sent them the mature heights. And that's what we're put into scale, into the rendering.
Okay. And then I realize that we don't have jurisdiction over this, but this picture is showing the buildings being mostly white and green. And the picture that was behind you is, has got a lot of yellow in it. I realize that we don't have jurisdiction over the paint colors, but I was just wondering if those are accurate, you know, is it going to be white, green?
So Mark, are you, I was going to have the architect just pipe in here because I think one was sort of based on an older design. And I think this is the latest and greatest that's in the rendering.
Okay. So it's, it's mostly white and green.
Yeah. Mark, are you on? Or Christina, if you wanted to comment?
Yeah. So it, the rendering, this rendering is taken from a different angle than the other rendering. But yeah, majority of it is the body of the building is green. And then they have the pop out areas, which are like a copper color. And then the base of the building, where the entrances are, is a stone. You can see a little bit of that there. And you'll see them in the entryways, like from the parking lot. But I'd say the majority of the building is green and then the next color would be white. And then the accents are in that copper and then a stone color on the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I, and I'm also glad to hear that you are, you are using the 100 year storm because as, as Tom was mentioning, we have been having much higher storm events, much higher, you know, they're calling them 1500 and they even were saying 200 and 250 for some that we had within the last few years. So I'm glad that, you know, that, that all of us, state, local, and applicants are upsizing, you know, to meet this, these extremes that we're having. So, thank you.
Anyone else on the board? All right, at this point, I would like to invite anyone from the public. I note that we received an email in opposition to the project. Fortunately, the sender didn't identify his residence, but that is one comment. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak at this time? All right, I'm going to give the public another opportunity. But I would like to move on to vote. So we have four groups of votes, if you will. We need to determine whether the project is scattered and premature as one. As mentioned earlier, we have two subdivision waivers and five site waivers. And I will put out for your consideration that we vote on each of those as a block. But people, if people are, that then we'll do them individually. And then we have the conditional use permit to vote on. And then I'll come back for one last check if anyone's from the public. And then we will, I will close the public portion at that point, turn it over to deliberations and move on to motion to approve. Everyone okay with that?
Can we show them on the screen, please?
Tim, do you have?
Yeah, there they are.
Those are the waivers. So the first one we need to talk about is whether this project is scattered and premature. I note that staff recommends that it's not. Can I have discussion on this particular point? We have, and I'll just remind you that we have the impact study as a big portion of that decision. Any discussion as to whether this project is scattered and premature? Kathy, I don't know if you wanted to speak. We see you at the moment.
Nope, thank you.
Joan, may I ask you for a motion? Project is not scattered and premature.
Okay, I have the form in front of me and do I need to, I'm going to read it just the way I've been given it. So it's a motion, Joan Monroe moves that the Lebanon Planning Board finds the application of trustees of Dartmouth College property owner and Michael's Student Living LLC applicant for final major subdivision and site plan review approval of property located at 401 Mount Support Road, Tax Map 24 Lot 2. Number PB 2020 07 SPR is not scattered and premature based on the final subdivision layout and on the totality of the application information, materials, evidence and testimony submitted to and reviewed by the board.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that. This is Laurel.
Laurel, thank you. Discussion on this motion. All right, I don't hear anyone with any discussion, so I will proceed with the roll call of the vote. And I will start with Laurel.
Laurel votes yes.
Joan?
Joan votes yes.
Jim?
Counselor Winnie votes aye.
I vote in favor. Tom?
Tom votes in favor.
And Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
Thank you. So we have one person who's recused and six are in favor, so that passes. Then we move to the subdivision waivers, the two waivers. Again, my suggestion is that we vote these as a block. If anyone's opposed to that, please let me know now. Otherwise, I will again turn to Joan and ask you to make the motion.
So this, can I just ask a question first, Chair?
Kathy?
Yes. Is this the one that has to do with the La Haye Drive?
No, that, the La Haye.
Security.
It's not a waiver. These two are, given the fact that they, there's still ongoing discussions with advanced transit and, and other issues. And so they're asking for a waiver on regulations to complete that work.
Well, Mr. Chair, this is Tim. It's, these are requirements that are specific to a subdivision where the applicant is, is, or, or any applicant is given the opportunity to post security for the improvements required by the subdivision in lieu of actually completing those requirements in order to record the plat. And so this is really just information that is asked to be provided upfront about the, the, the cost of the, the overall improvements to be made. It's sort of, it's just, it's sort of lining up information that's, that is helpful to have at the outset in order to look ahead to the bond that will need to be, or the, the security that will need to be posted, if you will, for the required improvements. But these are sort of procedural requirements in a way. And, and staff doesn't have any, staff doesn't have any concern about waiving them in this instance.
So they're not waiving this, the need for the performance security agreement, simply the timing of it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Thank you, Kathy. All right, Joan, may I have the motion, please?
Sure. Joan Monroe moves that the Lebanon Planning Board approve waivers for the application of trustees of Dartmouth College property owner and Michael's Student Living LLC applicant, number PB 2020 07 SPR. Should that say SPR? Because that's the site plan regs? And these are subdivision waivers? Tim?
Well, that, that's, that's just the code that the planning department gives to the application.
Okay, SPR from the following sections of the subdivision regulations. Section 10.4. Capital C. Point 2. Point small a. The final review submission shall include a final statement of the work required on existing streets and other offsite improvements to meet the minimum standards set forth herein, including cost estimates and the method of meeting such costs. Okay, that one had a, but I don't see a b. Section.
No, it's, it's, this is Tim. It's just, it's just trying to condense the language in 10.4 C2A. It's not, yeah.
Okay.
It's complete as written.
Okey doke. Section 10.4. Capital C. Point 2. Point lowercase b. The final review submission shall include cost estimates for the completion of all on and offsite improvements, which shall be subject to a performance security agreement pursuant to section 7.10 of these regulations.
Thank you, Joan. May I have a second?
Counselor Winnie will second.
Thank you, Jim. Any discussion? All right, I will proceed with the vote. Tom?
Votes to, Tom votes to approve.
Thank you, Kathy.
Kathy approves, but, but the, it hasn't been changed in the writing.
What specifically hasn't been changed in the writing?
The word deny.
Oh, okay. I thought that I had read it.
You read it, but.
It wasn't, it didn't change. Thank you, Kathy. You approve. Laurel? Joan?
Joan votes yes.
Jim?
Counselor Winnie votes aye.
Mr. Chair, I don't think you recorded my vote.
I heard it. I heard it, Laurel. And I vote in favor. So we have one person not present, one recused and six in favor. We now move to the five site plan waivers. Again, I would recommend that we do these as a block. One of them, just to remind you, is the FIRE waiver, which have been granting to other applications. We've had ample opportunity to discuss that one. I think it's something that our subcommittee will get to in due course.
The screen so we can see the bottom one, please.
Surely, Tim, do you, are you controlling?
Still can't see the very last one.
The last one is the FIRE one.
No, no.
Can you still not see it?
Yeah, no, it's good now. Thank you.
So is everyone comfortable voting these as a block?
I do have a question.
Please.
On the last one, there is an ellipsis after design and construction requirements. Don't recall seeing that before and I'm wondering what it refers to.
Mrs. Tim, the, I, I think, I think I just left it out for brevity. The idea was to give the, the board the essence of the requirement without putting in unnecessary verbiage. But I could read section 8.1 into the record just so everyone is clear. And then if you, if you would like to do so, you could adopt that, the full language of section 8.1 as, within the motion.
I guess my concern is that with the ellipsis there. you know, it could mean anything, right?
Well, no, I think the ellipsis is, is, uh, is a device, a, a device to indicate that there is language that's being quoted that's not included within. There's language in the section that's not being included within the quote of that section.
Right.
This is David Brooks. I don't, yeah, I, I think it's, it's a short enough section, 8.1 entire, that I don't think it would be that difficult to, for Tim to read it into the record, and that way the board has an understanding of what the, that ellipsis is representing.
Sounds, sounds good.
I have a question. Monroe?
Hang on a second, Joan. Can you just, so, Tim, do you happen to have that handy?
Yes, and I, it's easy enough to, to copy and paste it into the motion as well.
And I'll turn to you.
Sorry.
My question, Chair?
Is it in pertaining to section 8.1?
Well, I'm going to point out that it, that that same, you know, bracketed space is also in 6.2. E. Point 1 and 6.5 before. So I wondered if it was the same words, or if it's different words for each of these three examples.
Thank you, Joan. Good catch.
I would guess it's different words, it's just whatever the text is. So if we're going down this road, Tim, I will ask you to read all three. So we're starting with section 6.2-e1.
Okay.
At least read to the, the point where you've covered what is not shown, and then we have the rest of it.
Okay.
Do we want to start with the first one and do that when we get to it?
That is the first one.
No, the, the first one doesn't have any, anything missing.
Well, I'm, I'm still hoping to do these as a block, Joan.
Well, I just was wanting to keep them in the order that, that we have them, you know, that we have them in.
Right, but that will be part of the motion when you get to read it, and when you read it, you will skip the portions that are in the ellipses.
Okay, so I-
I mean, in the, in the, in the case of section 6.2-e1, the language that's been omitted was omitted because the applicant is meeting that, that language. Some, some of these, you know, I think the board has asked, and I think it makes sense that the waiver requests be more specifically tailored to exactly what it is that the applicant needs a waiver from. Some of these requirements have really multiple requirements contained in a si- a single section, and, and that doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean that a waiver is being requested with respect to every requirement contained within that section, and so language quoted here for 6.2-e1 is, are the portions of 6.2-e1 that the applicant is, is requesting a waiver from.
So if it's not there, we are not waiving it.
Correct.
Okay, and then for 5-e4, come on mute, we can hear a lot of sign. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Laurel.
Yes, Laurel.
Tim, I'm, I'm sorry to be a pain about this, but there's something that makes me uncomfortable about not having the language there.
We could add, it's not, not, very easy to add.
I, I just think it would be wise.
But if we're not waiving it, then isn't it confusing if it's there?
Well, that's, that's another question. It's a good question. If, in fact, we are waiving, are granting a waiver for that section, but only part of that section, then shouldn't, shouldn't this reflect that? And with something more than an ellipsis? Something that says to, you know, future planning board members, this is what we did?
So this is, this is David Brooks. I think the 6.2. E. One is a multi-paragraph regulation. The first paragraph is part of the essential purpose. It speaks to, in order to moderate summer temperatures due to heated pavement and so on. That first paragraph is not being, is not, the applicant's not requesting a waiver from that first paragraph there.
Then it should, it should not be there.
So, but the language of the second paragraph that was snipped is easy enough and has now been inserted. The, the section starting, any parking area containing three or more rows of parking. So I would say, you're right. Kathy, that first paragraph in 6.2-e1 should be removed from the waiver because you're not waiving it. They meet it.
Couldn't we just put part of section 6.2. E. Point 1 and then quote what we're waiving?
Yes. We've done that in the past. We, we, after section 6.2-e1, you can put in brackets or-
Beginning with-
Just say partial waiver, and then quote the section that's, that the part of the regulation that is being waived.
That would make it much clearer.
I think so, yeah. So now we have to remove that first paragraph, right? And write partial waiver.
Are we, Joan, sorry, Laurel and Kathy, are you good now with what is shown for the two others?
Yes.
I, I, I have a question about 8.1.
Yes.
Is it prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the clubhouse?
I think so.
Waiving the club, that we're only giving this waiver to allow them to build the clubhouse without having everything else in the development completed, right?
I, I think that is correct, because they are seeking the certificate of occupancy for that clubhouse prior to everything else being done. And I'm pretty sure there's a condition of approval that speaks to that more clearly.
Would, what do you mean? In our document somewhere?
Correct. Later down in the, in the actual decision.
So David-
I wouldn't want this there then, 8.1, because we, we don't want to give them a waiver from completing those requirements prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. That reads like it's for the whole development. If it said certificate of occupancy for the clubhouse, but-
Yeah, that, perfect. Perfect.
So can, is it Tim that's doing the typing?
Yes. What would you like it to say, Kathy?
For the clubhouse.
Right at the end, Tim.
Well, without the parentheses and period after occupancy.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And no capital F, yeah, perfect.
That's better.
Any other changes?
I'm, I just have one question, and after we typed and retyped 6.2. E. Point 1, is that the way it was originally on the waiver sheet, or did something get added to it? I don't have it in front of me.
I copied and pasted the second paragraph for datum into the motion that you see before you.
So it's now longer. There's no ellipsis in it, no longer.
Correct.
Joan, are you able to read all of this?
I, I can read it, but I, you know, yeah, I would might stumble through it. Because for, for me, it's very tiny, but legible if I get close enough.
Well, maybe, Tim, if you could enlarge it and scroll down, and that would-
Yeah, that'd be good. Thank you.
And, and remove the deny, well. So don't forget it. All right, Joan?
Okay. Okay. Joan Monroe moves that the Lebanon Planning Board approve waivers for the application of trustees of Dartmouth College, property owner, and Michael's Student Living LLC applicant, number PB 2020 07 SPR, from the following sections of the site plan review regulations. Section 5.1. Capital E. Point 15. The plan shall depict existing trees over 12 inches in diameter, measured 4.5 feet above the ground surface, and within 25 feet of the disturbed area must be counted and shown on the plan. If included towards fulfilling the landscaping requirements, all calculations for square footage of perimeter landscaping shall be shown. Okay. Section 6.2. Capital E. Point 1, partial waiver. Any parking area containing three or more rows of parking shall be planted along the perimeter as stated above, and also shall have landscape islands placed between each double row of parking spaces, exclusive of aisles. These landscape islands shall have a minimum width of eight feet, shall extend the length of the row of parking spaces, shall be planted with deciduous trees for shade, and shall terminate on each end with a landscape bed. If linear landscape islands are not practicable, then other interior landscape islands of equivalent size and evenly distributed throughout the parking lot may be allowed. Section 6.5. Capital B. Point 4. All projects proposed for development, except for those in rural lands and heavy industrial zoning districts, shall install sidewalks along the street frontage, frontages. Section 6.5. B. Point 5, Capital B. Each site shall provide adequate access from public highways and sufficient maneuvering room for fire, police, and other emergency vehicles. The fire department shall provide information indicating whether or not this requirement is satisfied by the proposed plan. Minimum access requirements shall include a 50-foot turning radius and a 22-foot fire lane, lanes at the rear of the buildings. And 22-foot fire lanes at the rear of the buildings. Section 8.1. The applicant shall construct and complete all design and construction requirements in accordance with Article VI, VI, and any other applicable, applicable section of these regulations as required in the notice of action prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the clubhouse.
Chair?
Joan, can I have a second first, and then I'll come back to you? Do I have a dis- a second on this motion?
Not until I see what the question is.
Well, the rules of procedure say that we can't discuss a motion until it has been-
Then I'll second it.
Thank you, Laurel. And your question?
It's Kathy. Section 6.5. B. Point 1. I mean, E. Point 1. I, I don't think that, I think there's something in here that when we were discussing this, David said if the ellipsis was in there, it meant we weren't waiving it. And now we've added a sentence in there that wasn't in the original one. The original one reads, any parking area containing three or more rows of parking shall have landscape islands placed. So it's not that shall be planted along the perimeter as stated above. That's not being waived. Starting with be planted.
But then it says, and also shall have.
So to the extent, sorry, this is David Brooks. So the way to, to clarify that would be to put an ellipsis in, to strike that section that where it complies with that section of, of the language. But it's, so it's not, it doesn't need a waiver because they comply with that requirement of, of planting along the perimeter. The way, the way to do that is the way Tim had it to, to begin with, which would be to strike that, that one clause from, from the paragraph.
Joan, do you agree?
Yes.
Do you approve a change of motion?
The reason that I agree with that is because now we have the words partial waiver in there, which we didn't have before.
Right.
So, so, sorry, Joan, you agree with the change? And Laurel, a second, you agree?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you, ladies. And Kathy, once the ellipsis goes in, are you good?
I'm just looking at it.
Yep.
I think it ended at landscape bed.
Yeah, the original one. Yeah, ended at landscape bed.
The last sentence wasn't in there. Tim, does that make sense?
Okay, so the, the board wants me to remove the last sentence from-
Yeah, if linear landscape islands. Yes. That's, that's what I understand. Joan, you're in agreement?
Yes.
And Laurel?
I would put an ellipsis after that to indicate that there is more to the waiver.
Well, no, this is just, that is the waiver, Laurel.
No. I'm sorry, I misspoke. No, I didn't misspoke, misspeak. This is labeled partial waiver.
Right.
Anything that's not included is indicated in an ellipsis, right?
Right, so there's more, sorry, this is David. There's more to the regulation. There's not more to the waiver.
So there should be an ellipsis at the end after bed.
No, because that's the rest of the, the, the entire rule. And that's not being waived.
That's the entire section that's being waived, except for the part that was skipped.
I think it's fine. I think we're splitting hairs here.
Right, thank you. All right, I believe that we have agreement from the person who moved the motion in the second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, I'm gonna do a roll call. Jim?
Counselor Winnie votes in favor.
I'm in favor. Tom?
Tom is in favor. I still have issues with 6.5-b. Point 5, but not on this particular development, because I think there's adequate access to the rear of the building, so I'm in favor.
All right, thank you. Matt is recused. Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
Laurel?
Laurel votes yes.
And Joan?
Joan votes yes.
So we have six in favor, one recused, and one, uh, not. All right, so we're now moving to the conditional use permit.
Chair?
Yes.
I think you misspoke at the end of that. It should be just six, six to zero. We don't include the recused person.
Correct, okay.
So it's just six dash zero.
Right.
Okay.
So Joan, I'll ask you to make the motion.
Okay. Let's see. Joan Monroe moves that the Lebanon Planning Board approves the application of trustees of Dartmouth College, property owner, and Michael's Student Living LLC applicant, number PB 2020 07 SPR, for a conditional use permit per section 607.3. Capital B. Point 2 of the zoning ordinance to allow parking in- B point 2 of the zoning ordinance to allow parking in excess of the 120% maximum set forth in section 607 point 3 point capital A of the zoning ordinance. Based on testimony given, application materials presented, and supporting documents submitted, the Planning Board concludes the following with respect to the criteria set forth in section 607 point 3 point capital B point 2 of the zoning ordinance. Sorry. A, under case A, the need for additional parking cannot reasonably be met through provision of on-street parking or shared parking with adjacent or nearby uses. B, the proposed development demonstrates that its design and intended uses will continue to support high levels of existing or planned transit and pedestrian activity. And C, the site plan indicates where additional parking can be redeveloped to a more intensive transit supportive, transit supportive use in the future.
Do I have a second for this motion?
Counsel Winnie will second.
Thank you, Jim. Discussion. Tom, I don't know if that was your attempt to start. I thought I heard a muted voice.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Bruce?
Well, I thought I heard a male voice, so I was guessing maybe you were, you wanted to begin a discussion.
Uh, no, I don't think so.
This is Kathy. I have a question.
Please, Kathy.
Could someone explain C clearly?
Nice. No, nobody can.
Pardon me?
Who's that speaking?
Oh, can you hear me really? It's Stephen Wood. I'm sorry, I thought I was muted.
Yes, please mute yourself, Stephen. Thank you.
I thought you had me well muted, sir. I'm very sorry. I was talking to myself.
Yeah. Tim, any?
Um, well, I would say, I would say in this case, it's, it's not, it's not necessarily applicable, because the only actual, there's only one space that will be, that is proposed to be constructed at this time in excess of the 120% maximum that's permitted by right, if you will. So, you know, the fact, the fact that the site is, is proposed to be accessed internally via a shuttle, a bus shuttle, and then also has, is, has close access to an existing advanced transit line on Mount Spore Road. You, you know, if you wanted to think about the elimination of the one excess parking space, well, perhaps that would, that would require that one person to take some form of mass transportation, where the, that's already going to be provided in some fashion on or in connection with this, this development or near this development. And so it's not necessarily applicable precisely here, because the, the, all but one of the parking spaces are future parking spaces. And under the current regulations, those, construction of those spaces would have to come back to the Planning Board for site plan review. So it's really just one parking space that will actually be constructed that is implicated by this conditional use permit.
And a second question, which may, may be not exactly according to this, but there was mention of parking for the public to access trails and hiking. Where are those additional parking spots, and where would they be? Are they additional to the 120% or?
No. No.
Can the applicant speak? They're included in the plan.
Okay. Yep.
They're, they're, they're adjacent to where the trail is on the southwestern portion of the property. They're included in the plan of what we already have.
But they're part of the 100, I can't see the top of the page, so I forgot the total number.
120%.
Yeah, they're not part of the access that we're using, that we would use as accessory parking if we needed. They're part of the base parking.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have a question, Chair?
Yes, please.
This is Monroe.
Yep.
I'm concerned by putting this C in there, even, even though we're told that it's, Tim is referring to one spot, but I also, I almost feel like this is saying that there's a spot where more could be put, and I worry about those spaces, the early in this application, that we're actually going to be very close to the, to the, to the prime wetland. So I, I, I don't want this to be used in the future to say, okay, let's go back to that original, original, original version where we had those spaces. I, I mean, if they need more spaces, I'd like to see them come back to the, to the Planning Board.
But
Yeah, this is David. This is David Brooks. They, they will have to come back to you, I believe, per condition and per, and the way the zoning ordinance is written for this section that allows the board to waive certain, the construction of certain parking spaces. It requires that the, that the applicant come back to you to get those approved. In addition, what you're approving doesn't show any of those parking spaces on the, on the far side of the wetland. Or even down close to the, the prime wetland. So I don't think, they, they would not, they absolutely would not be able to simply build those without coming back to you.
So, so David, you're saying that we should, we should leave it in?
Hello?
I, I think it's
Hello?
Yes, I, I think it's okay to leave that in.
Are you?
Because it's part of the zoning ordinance. It's parting, part of the findings that the
Oh, no worries. And I'm sorry, I sound disjointed, but I'm
There we go. I've got. That section C is part of the conditional use, part of the findings that the board must make to, to grant the conditional use permit. So I think it is appropriate to leave it in. I think, as Tim described, the idea was that when we crafted this language in the zoning ordinance, again, if there's going to be more than the minimum parking approved, the idea was that it should, it should be able to be reused and repurposed at some point in the future, if that is appropriate. In this case, as, again, as Tim has pointed out, the, the number of spaces in excess of what they're allowed to do is only a single space that is, that's triggering this, the need for this conditional use permit. So it's, it would be hard to repurpose 180 square feet to a more transit intensive use. But that, again, that is the, that is the part of the general finding that the board has to make in this case. So I do think it should be in, even though it's somewhat less applicable than it might be in other circumstances.
Thank you for that, David. My, my attitude is that this is either we're giving, granting something in excess, or we're staying at the 120%. I take it in a very simplistic way of looking at what we're deciding. Whether it's one or more in excess, that to me is the decision on which I'll be voting. Joan, did you, we can see you at the moment. Do you have something that you wish to say?
No, I'm, no, I'm thinking that, no, I'm ready.
Any other comments, discussions?
Sorry, is the public going to be let back in on this? I've had my hand up for a year and a day.
No, the public was invited to comment before we started all of these.
Oh, Bruce, I've, Mr. Garland, except I've had, I've done everything on the, on your, I'm looking at your face. I'm also looking at the little thing to put my hand up, which has been clicked for a very long time. So go ahead and vote, and then I'll comment after the vote, sir.
Yeah, nice. As I said earlier, we were going to do these four sections, and then we're going to come back and see that you were there, I don't believe.
Sir, I understood that. I'm sorry, but during the first comment period, I didn't unmute myself because I didn't want to be rude. So just for what it's worth.
Okay.
I'm not criticizing anything. I'll comment after the, after the vote.
That's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, any comment from board members on the, on this motion? Are we ready to vote? So this time, I will start with Jim Winnie.
Counsel Winnie votes in favor.
I vote against. Tom?
Tom votes in favor.
Kathy?
Kathy votes no.
Laurel?
Laurel votes no.
And Joan?
Joan votes yes.
And we have a tie.
Motion fails.
That's correct. Tie is no action, so the board needs to craft a different motion that couldn't get a majority vote.
And this is Tim. If, if there's a motion to deny the conditional use permit, it should contain reasons for the denial.
Can we see the, the waiver language again on the screen, Tim?
Um, it's, it, it's there now. I mean, I, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, let me share the screen. I'm sorry.
Can you, can you, can we see the actual motion? Thank you.
May a member of the public offer a point of order?
Mr. Wood, I believe that's you.
Uh, yeah, I'm afraid it is, sir.
All right.
The point of order is that there is no motion to deny, that you have just, by tying, a motion has failed. And you have sensibly, by some of your votes, done what, Laurel, I'm sorry, I don't know some of you well enough to use your last, I mean, to use your first names, but I don't know your last names. Laurel's objections to language, Kathy's objections to the uncertainty, Tom's objection to certainty, they're all very well, I'm sorry, there are others. Jones to the, the weird disingenuousness of the, of the the way the proposed planting will look. You, many of you have expressed reservation, and you denied. I mean, you denied by inaction of vote. There is no, you don't have to.
That is not our rules. Our, our rules are that we need to deny.
Well, you, 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 your motion has failed.
Right. We now need to move on to a motion to deny.
Well, you can
The way we work.
You may have Okay, so I'll stop commenting now on the actual content, or?
No, I will come back, and as I said, I will open it up again. I promised that I wouldn't. I will open.
All right, it was the border. I did not understand that you think you need to vote to deny once you've let something fail for, anyway, I guess I misunderstood the rules.
Right.
Thank you. You bet. Thank you.
All right, we're Kathy, I believe you were asking to see the motion?
Yes, I see it. Thank you.
Here, this is Christina Vega from the applicant. We are currently asking for the waiver to be held to potentially build, besides the one parking spot, the remaining parking spots in the future if needed. We had showed a location to the north side of the spine road in the earlier site plan revisions, per Joan's comment about being closer to the wetlands. In no sense were we looking to do a wetlands crossing to add this accessory parking. It would be on the north side of the spine road. So just to share that, we noted that in an earlier site plan. And we would just add them if we needed it, except for that one parking space that's currently shown in the site plan to include in this first phase of construction.
So, David, you said we need to put in a reason.
Uh, yes, I believe you do. You, well, yes, you need to craft a motion that, that expresses why you feel perhaps one of those three, or one or more of those three criteria are not met.
Well, how about B?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Yeah, I'm not
To deny it because B, I think, makes sense.
Can you offer some, some language as to, you know, why you feel that it does not?
Are these the only, I mean, like, sometimes we have only two or three choices that we can use. Can we offer language, or do we have to use A, B, or C here?
The, the conditional use, excuse me, the conditional use permit criteria, this is Tim, is, as you see on the screen, subsections A, B, and C of section 607 3B 2 of the zoning ordinance, the board would have to find that at least one of those criteria is not met in order to deny the conditional use permit. And so if there is, as David's suggesting, if there is, if it's, if it's B, that, that the board feels that has, that, that criteria has not been satisfied here, then we're suggesting that a, a reason be given as to why that rationale has not been satisfied.
Well, I'm thinking, and I may be confused here, but I'm thinking you need to prove that one of those is not satisfied to approve it, but to deny it, it would be the opposite, that it, it is satisfied.
Um, Tim, what if, what if A were simply changed to the need for additional parking can reasonably met? Can reasonably be met? And so
Well, it's not on the street or
I, I think you, I think you could do that. I think I, and, and to be clear, it's not, it's not the board's burden to, to, to demonstrate why or, or why, why the applicant has or hasn't met the criteria. I don't, I don't want that, that to be what you're hearing me say. It's definitely not. It's the applicant's burden, but they did provide, I believe there was some analysis provided in a written letter from attorney Phil Hastings. And so, you know, the applicant has addressed the criteria, perhaps not sufficiently, but I just think if, if you can provide some rationale or some explanation as to why, and it doesn't, it can be brief, it could be a sentence, if you like.
Okay, so let me, let me take the fact, the conceptual notion of it, not necessarily the actual word. But I'm sorry?
I'm sorry to interrupt. This is attorney Hastings.
Um, may I finish my sentence?
Of course.
Um, what I find problematic about this section is it is speculative. It is based on assumptions that may or may not happen. And I'm not comfortable going down that road.
To approve or deny?
To approve.
But we're talking about But we're talking about.
The denial.
But you, somebody asked for a rationale for the
To deny.
To deny and leading, perhaps leading to some language that could be developed.
Right.
And that is the concept of my, behind my rationale.
Well, if I can jump in, my rationale is that we had letters from the Conservation Commission, from the regional planning expressing grave concern about the amount of surface parking. I don't see Tim and David why we can't simply decide that we think that there is sufficient parking with 120%.
I'm sorry, may I, I'm, I'm trying to follow the form, but may a member of the public offer another point?
No, 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 no. This is not, this is not open to the public.
Well, you don't have to do what you're doing, sir. I'll mute myself again.
Thank you.
You're doing something else. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chair, this is Kathy. The applicant has demonstrated in a number of, of their presentations that they are planning for not only to coordinate with advanced transit, but to have shuttle service. So I think that B, it's where it says that the proposed development demonstrates that it intends to use high levels of planned transit. I think that's a reason.
So that, that is a reason to support, that is a reason in support of the conditional use permit. Again, sections 607 point.
It doesn't make sense, David. If they're planning to use extra transit, you wouldn't give them more parking. You give, how, how is that?
So here's, here's, here's what the section says. 607.2 says for spaces other than those described in section B1, which describes the 120% and spaces that don't count towards that 120% cap. The planning board may approve parking in excess of 120% of the maximum set forth in subsection A by conditional use, provided that the following criteria are met. The need for additional parking cannot reasonably be met through provision of on-street parking or shared parking with, with adjacent or nearby uses. The proposed development demonstrates that its design, that, that its design and intended uses will continue to support high levels of existing or planned transit and pedestrian activity. And the site plan indicates where additional parking can be redeveloped to a more intensive transit supportive use in the future. So in order to grant the conditional use permit, you have to find that all of those apply. To deny the conditional use permit, you would have to find that one or more of those is not satisfied. And the idea behind B is that even though they're proposing all of this parking, the design of the project and its intended uses will continue to support high levels of existing or planned transit. That's part of the, that's part of the essence of approving the conditional use permit.
But David, that, that says may that the key word, which is may, doesn't apply because we're forced into, if, if all three of those we agree with, then we have to.
No.
Not may approve.
It did not pass. We don't have to do anything.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak to these three points? This is attorney Hastings.
Not, Mr. Hastings, not if you're going to argue on behalf of Dartmouth, we need to resolve this in terms of the planning board's understanding of how this rule applies. Clearly split 3-3.
I, I mean, if, if someone would like to propose a motion to deny, again, there's a, there's a request on the table. I believe that the board has to take action on the request. And the only action you can take is by majority vote. So you, the, the motion to approve did not receive a majority. So I think the only, the, the next step is to propose a motion that proposes to deny the, the request. But to do that, you have to, you have to indicate in your motion that one of those is, has not been met.
David, I don't want to question your judgment at all. I just want to ask you, when a motion doesn't pass, are we obligated to propose the opposite motion?
No, no, I, I, I just before Tim jumps in, I would say if there's something specific about the motion that didn't pass and you change the motion, I, I think you can change the motion and, and still have it to be to approve, but with some different language or different caveats or something.
Right. I was going to say, this is Tim, theoretically you could offer, someone could offer a, I, I agree with what David said, and, and example that would be, you offer a motion with a condition of approval. That would, that you could certainly do that. I'm not suggesting a conditional, a condition of approval would make sense here. I don't even know what that would be. But generally speaking, that would be a way to offer a, a motion to approve that may be more palatable to, to the, to the board members who are opposed, or at least one of those. But I, I wonder if it just, if it would be helpful to just very quickly read the rule of procedure that's, that's, that's implicated here. It's, it's Article 6, 6.2 and 6.3 of the Lebanon Planning Board's Rules of Procedure last revised August 26, 2019. 6.2 provides that determinations on any matter before the board shall require the concurrence of a majority of the regular members present. And then 6.3 provides that a tie vote or an approval or denial by less than a majority of the regular members present constitutes no action. If the board is unable to obtain concurrence of a majority of regular members present on, sorry, concurrence of majority of regular members present on, on a request, which is what's before you, right now it's a request, because of the absence of one or more board members from the vote, it shall, it shall continue the discussion or may continue the matter to a subsequent meeting pursuant to section 5.8 above.
Are there members absent?
Tim, that unfortunately won't help us because the one member who's absent will refuse himself when he rejoins.
Correct.
We're still going to have six people.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, Counselor Winnie?
Yes, Counselor.
Um, I, I just want to clarify a couple of things because we've kind of covered a lot of ground on this. So the 120% of parking set forth in section 607.3A is not what's being discussed here. We're discussing the overage of that 120%, correct?
Correct.
And, and that amounts to one space. So looking at the criteria to approve, here's, here's why I voted to approve. It seems like the need for additional parking cannot be reasonably met through provision of on-street parking because Mount Support Road is not, in my eyes, appropriate for on-street parking. And shared parking with adjacent or nearby uses doesn't seem to apply either, since there's not much else there. As far as B goes, the proposed development demonstrates that its design and intended uses will continue to support high levels of existing or planned transit and pedestrian activity. Again, I, I think it meets that criteria. The advanced transit bus or other shuttles seem to be meeting that for me. And there's eventually when all the parking studies, uh, traffic studies and things are complete, there will be sidewalks for pedestrian activity. And again, to me, the, the, for C, the site plan indicates where additional parking can be redeveloped to a more intensive transit supportive use in the future. Again, I think applies here. So I would have difficulty supporting a motion to deny based on those three criteria. Because to me, they all seem to be met.
Well, Jim, you left off the end of A, nearby uses. I just think that this application has a very large number of of surface parking spaces. And I'm just drawing the line at 120%. And I think that the necessity, that necessity is the mother of invention and if people need parking for cars they're not going to use during the week, but only on weekends, they will find parking in and over other places. So I'm just drawing the line at 120%. That's the reason for my vote.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I, I did address the nearby uses that there really aren't any other.
Not, not, not in, not in immediate, but within three miles, there's all a pan over.
Sure, I just disagree that it's reasonable to keep your car in, in Hanover, for instance, as opposed to where you live, if you're taking the bus somewhere.
Mr. Chair, this is Tim. One idea might be to see if the applicant, this is just a off-the-cuff idea, to see if the applicant might be willing to withdraw the conditional use permit request at this time because it would only mean the elimination of one parking space today. What it would not give the planning, the applicant at this time is, is the conditional use permit for the future parking spaces, but if the, but if the request is withdrawn, then the applicant could could come back in the future and make that request in, in the future and at the same time apply for a site plan review, which again, they'd have to come back for anyway. So perhaps that's something the applicant would, would, would consider. I'm also not sure. Yeah, that, that was, that was the idea. And just, and, and again, just to clarify that if the, the conditional use permit is granted, it is authorizing the construction of one parking space now and the construction of future parking spaces, but in order to construct those future parking spaces, they would have to come back to the planning board for a site plan review.
Then, so Tim, I think you hit the nail on the head. I think that the, the rather speculative nature of all of this really begs the question of, is this needed now? Is it needed this evening? Or can the applicant proceed without this particular request? Knowing that in the future, they can come back to the planning board and present another request.
Yeah, I mean, speaking from the applicant's perspective, this is Christina Vega with Michael Student Living. I'm fine withdrawing this request.
Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. I think, I think that that is the direction that makes the most sense in this case.
And that's very helpful.
And if we can prove it later that it is needed, then yeah, it's a whole different conversation. Understood.
And you, and then you have more information and we have more information and
Yep.
and people, I think, all around feel more comfortable.
I agree. That's, that's definitely the smartest way to go.
All right. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So now we're moving on to our main motion. And as I promised before that, I will now come back to the public. Are there comments from the public? Would this would be time to unmute?
I understand, sir. I do understand what you just said. I really don't want to criticize you noble volunteers. You should continue this. There have been enough reservations expressed by Tom. Again, I don't really know you well enough to use your first names, but I don't know your last names. Kathy, Laurel in particular about the language and the ellipses and exactly what's going on with the language. And Joan about the weirdness of the landscape, rather the.
Steve, Steve, I've got to ask you, are you in favor of the project or against the project?
Sir, I can't answer that question because like you, I am not adequately informed.
We're adequately informed. We've been at this for weeks.
I'm aware of that, sir. I've been reading. I apologize for not having joined your discussions, but you know, I know what that's like from your seat. I'm speaking now, having read about all this. I have followed it. I'm sorry I wasn't here before, but I'm here now to say, I don't think you're right. I do not think you're adequately informed. I run a business in this town. We're all getting hammered right now. I'm not weeping bitter tears for the difficulties that DHMC and Dartmouth are having on their timeframe when Lebanon has historically borne the brunt, borne the weight of our hasty planning board decisions, particularly on that little north corner of town. And I think you folks have enough questions. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just saying, boy, you shouldn't act right now. You really shouldn't act right now, but it, it's, I, I trust your judgment, folks. That's it. This is signing off. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else from the public?
There are a couple of others, Bruce.
All right. I'm, I'm listening. Is there someone from the public? I'm giving time to unmute. I'm not hearing anyone from the public. Kathy, do you have?
It looks like Phil Hastings has his hand up.
Well, he's, he is the applicant.
Oh, oh.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure we would have an opportunity to respond to any public comment at the end.
Oh. I'll, I'll give you that in a second. I'm just trying to find out if there's anyone else from the public. If not, then I am closing this portion of our proceedings to the public. Mr. Hastings, that was a critique of the, of our procedures. I'm not sure that.
I, I, I didn't know if there was going to be additional comments. I would just, I, I would question the, the comment that this board has acted hastily in, in any sense. I think it's been a very deliberative process. I think I noted at the last hearing that we had, as you noted, this, the board has been at it for a long time and there's been voluminous materials submitted to the board. So I, I don't believe the criticism of the board is warranted in this case.
Yeah, may I add something here, Mr. Chair?
Uh, that is Kathy?
No, it's Laurel.
Laurel, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Hastings, with all due respect, we customarily receive voluminous materials for everything we review, except very minor lot line adjustments and things of that nature. And we typically do take a long time because the decisions that we make will be with this city for decades to come.
I, I absolutely respect that. And I'm only pointing out that Mr. Wood's comments seem to be misplaced in, in this case.
We don't need to, to get into a discussion of his critiques, I don't think. I'm going to ask Joan Monroe, we have a very long motion that needs to be read into the minute. So Joan, can I ask you to begin with the motion to approve this application?
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Yes.
Before, did you, did you close the public hearing?
I did. I think closed it again. Well, I guess then I, I allowed Mr. Hastings in. So you're right. So I will now close the public hearing.
Are we sure that the public, the hearing has been closed or do we need to say it again?
Nope, I think he just did it.
Okay.
So Joan, over to you with the motion, please.
Okay, you're sure?
Yes.
Okay. Joan Monroe moves that the Lebanon Planning Board, Planning Board, approve the application of trustees of Dartmouth College, property owner, and Michael Student Living LLC applicant for final major subdivision and site plan review approval of property located at 401 Mount Support Road, tax map 24, lot 2, zoned R1, R3, and RL3. Number PB 2020-07-SPR as shown on a plan set titled, quote, "proposed multifamily housing project." 401 Mount Support Road, Lebanon, Grafton County, New Hampshire, unquote. Prepared by VHB dated February 10, 2020, revised March 18, 2020. VHB Project 52621.01. including any and all submissions and testimony provided for and during the public hearing with the following conditions. Conditions to be satisfied prior to the signing and recording of the plat. These conditions shall be satisfied within two years of the date of the notice of action. Number one, prior to the start of any construction activities on the property for which construction inspection is required, pursuant to this decision or any applicable ordinance or code, the applicant shall sign a subdivision agreement in accordance with section seven point nine point capital B of the subdivision regulations. Two, prior to the start of any construction activities on the property for which construction inspection is required pursuant to this decision or any applicable ordinance or code, the applicant shall sign a water and sewer extension and inspection agreement in accordance with chapters one thirty-six and one eighty-two of the city code and section point fourteen point two of the subdivision regulations. Three, pursuant to sub to section fourteen point five of the subdivision regulations, the applicant shall provide a performance bond for all required improvements, both on and off-site, including but not limited to roadway and parking improvements, landscaping, lighting, utilities, bike lane shoulder improvements and sidewalks prior to signing and recording of the Mylar in an amount considered adequate by the Department of Public Works and an inform satisfactory to the city attorney. The performance bond shall be secured by a surety bond, a letter of credit, or an escrow account. Four, the applicant shall submit final designs, including construction drawings of all infrastructure features, including the proposed on and off-site roadway and parking areas, sidewalks, water and sewer utilities, and storm drainage systems to the city engineer for approval. All such designs shall meet the required design standards set forth in chapters one thirty-six, Sewer Service, and one eighty-two Water Service of the Code of the City of Lebanon. Number five, street names and numbering shall be approved by the Police Department. The sole purpose of such review and approval shall be to assure that such names do not create confusion under the state's enhanced nine-one-one system. Six, the applicant shall coordinate the final design of the crosswalk with the Planning and Development Department and the Department of Public Works and shall install flashing pedestrian crossing beacons. Seven, the applicant shall address the following to the satisfaction of the city engineer. A, demonstrate that the proposed snow storage areas are adequate or provide additional snow storage areas or snow removal operations. B, the proposed central access road north of the southerly wetland appears to be lower in elevation than the adjacent wetland. The applicant shall address any anticipated stormwater and or sub drainage issues related to this condition. C, provide catch space and capacity analysis and calculations as requested per letter from Stuart, I mean Stephen Keach, P E, dated March five, twenty twenty, comment number forty-six. D, provide copies of updated revised plans upon completion of the geotechnical engineer's design of the proposed sub drainage systems. Eight, prior to the start of any construction activities on the property for which construction inspection is required pursuant to this decision or any applicable ordinance or code, the applicant shall provide two, two revised plans, sets depicting the following revisions to the satisfaction of the Planning and Planning and Development Department, the Fire Department, and the city engineer as follows. A, any changes made pursuant to conditions of approvals number six and seven. B, pursuant to the granting of a partial waiver from the requirements of section eight point one of the site site plan review regulations incorporate into the plan set, the plat prepared by VHB and submitted at the April twenty-seven, twenty twenty hearing titled, quote, limits of improvements temporary occupancy, unquote. C, add a note to the plat titled, quote, open space exhibit, unquote, prepared by VHB and included with the agenda packet for the June eight, twenty twenty Planning Board meeting, indicating how the open space will be protected and add the revised plat to the plan set. D, incorporate all other revised plan sheets and changes submitted during the course of the hearing and update all other plan sheets as necessary to reflect the changes. E, identify specific use uses of, quote, active use area, unquote. F, show the removal or covering over, i.e. fine mesh, light soil, conservation mixed seating of the riprap along the property's frontage from the emergency access driveway south to the property line as recommended in section three point B of the, quote, Lebanon Wildlife Quarters, unquote, study prepared by Rick Van De Pole, Ph.D., dated November twenty sixteen. G, add mailing addresses of all abutters, SPR section five point one point capital E point two. H, add a plan note indicating that no fences shall be installed in the vicinity of the documented wildlife corridor, such as along the Mount Support roadway. I, add a plan note indicating that underground utilities, electric, telephone, and cable must maintain a minimum clearance of ten ten feet from all proposed water lines. J, speed tables or other traffic calming measures shall be depicted to the satisfaction of the Lebanon Police and Fire Departments in order to limit excessive speeds within the development. K, add building mounted light fixtures to building elevations, SPR section five point one point capital E point twelve. L, identify how trash enclosures will be screened, SPR section six point two point capital B point eight. M, clearly identify all improvements and or utilities or or portions thereof proposed to be conveyed to, owned by, and or maintained by the City of Lebanon and delineate all easement areas if needed. S U B section ten point four point capital C point one point lowercase m. N, identify the proposed name of the access road. S U B section ten point four point C point one, capital C, point one point lowercase d. O, amend the existing conditions plan to address the presence of any deed restrictions, easements, et cetera, on the property. P, amend cover sheet as follows. One, identify nature of plan revisions in accordance with section ten point four point capital A point one point lowercase a of the subdivision regulations. Two, and these are Roman numerals, zoning summary chart. Back to Arabic numbers, one point one. Clarify that the property is also partially located in the R three and RL three zoning districts. Two, identify proposed impervious coverage in square feet and as a percentage. SPR section five point one point capital E point four point lowercase e point eleven and section five point one point capital E point ten. Three, update the double asterisk to reference the zoning ordinance last revised on one twenty-two twenty, which was the version in effect at the time of submission. Four, identify existing use vacant. Five, identify number of stories in each building and the gross square footage of each story. Six, identify the unit mix, total number of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, et cetera. Q, amend lighting plan as follows. Roman numeral three, make any necessary adjustments to reduce foot candles at the edge of the southern parking area to zero in order to prevent light spillage into the documented wildlife corner. Four, identify the lighting uniformity ratio for parking areas as required by section six point seven point three point lowercase a of the Site Plan Review Regulations. Five, clearly identify lighting fixture type, lamp type, height, and wattage. SPR section five point one point uppercase E point twelve. Six, provide manufacturer's specifications for all fixtures and adjust labeling so that fixtures identified on the lighting plan can be clearly matched with the manufacturer's specifications that are or will be provided. SPR section five point one point uppercase E point twelve. Seven, add section six point seven point two point lowercase d of the Site Plan Review Regulations as a plan note. R, amend landscaping plan as follows. Roman numeral eight, to include the berm located adjacent to the parking area at the southeastern corner of the development site, add evergreen plantings at least six six feet tall and spaced six six feet on center. Nine, remove unnecessary layers, including but not limited to existing conditions in order to help with legibility. Ten, ensure that all shrubs installed comply with the minimum shrub height of twenty-four to thirty inches for section six point two point capital B point five. Eleven, add the following requirements of the Site Plan Review Regulations as plan notes. Colon, section six point two point uppercase B point three, all new plant material shall be nursery grown stock, semicolon. Section six point two point capital B point four, first sentence only, semicolon. Section six point two point capital B point five, semicolon, and section six point two point capital H point one. Nine, the applicant shall provide a digital copy of the revised plan set and or revised application materials depicting any changes made pursuant to condition of approval number eight to the satisfaction of the Planning and Development Department and the city engineer. The digital copy shall use a PDF A format for archival purposes. Ten, prior to the start of any construction activities on the property, the applicant shall obtain or update, if appropriate, any required state approvals, including but not limited to the following. Lowercase a, NHDES wetland impact permit. Lowercase b, NHDES alteration of terrain permit, if necessary. Lowercase c, NHDES sewer connection permit, if necessary. Eleven, all outstanding engineering review fees shall be paid in full as required by section four point seven point capital E point one of the Site Plan Review Regulations. Conditions to be satisfied prior to application for a building permit. Twelve, the applicant shall schedule and hold a pre-building permit application meeting with the Planning Department, sitting building inspectors, city engineer, Department of Public Works, and Fire Department in order to help streamline the building permit review process. Thirteen, the applicant shall obtain approval from the city council or the city manager's office for any additional water and or sewer flows in accordance with the applicable chapter one thirty-six and one eighty-two of the city code. Fourteen, the applicant shall cooperate with the city and with the abutting property owners relative to the extension of sewer service on Mount Support Road to serve the project. Conditions to be satisfied prior to the issuance of a building permit. These conditions shall be satisfied within two years of the date of the notice of action. Fifteen, the development shall be subject to City of Lebanon impact fees pursuant to section two one three of the zoning ordinance, except to the extent that the applicant obtains a waiver of such fees as may be permitted under applicable law. The impact fee shall be calculated at the time of building permit issuance based on the impact fee schedule adopted on August thirteen, two thousand and eighteen. In accordance with RSA six seventy-four colon thirty-nine, the approved site plan shall be exempt from any future changes in impact fees and methodology for five years from the date of approval, semicolon. However, any building permits which are issued after the end of that five-year period shall be fully subject to whatever impact fees and methodology are in effect at the time of building permit issuance. Sixteen, the city shall retain the services of an independent third-party inspector for which the applicant shall be responsible for all inspection fees related to the construction and installation of on and off-site roadways, parking, sidewalks, water and sewer utilities, storm drainage, and erosion control in accordance with chapters one thirty-six and one eighty-two of the city code, section eight point two of the Site Plan Review Regulations, and section fourteen point two of the subdivision regulations. The applicant shall provide funding for inspection services in a form and amount acceptable to the city. Seventeen, edge of disturbance fencing shall be installed and maintained before and during any site work to be verified by the city engineer or city's third-party inspector on site. Eighteen, all water and sewer fees shall be paid as set forth in city code chapter sixty-eight. Conditions to be satisfied prior to the issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy for the clubhouse. Nineteen, pursuant to the granting of a partial waiver from the requirements of section eight point one of the Site Plan Review Regulations, a temporary certificate of occupancy for the clubhouse may be issued prior to the completion of all site improvements, provided that at least all improvements identified on the revised plan as being complete by the time of the issuance of the temporary certificate of occupancy have been constructed for the approved plan and all applicable regulations to the satisfaction of the Planning and Development Department and the Department of Public Works and provided that all life safety improvements are complete to the satisfaction of the building inspector and the Fire Department. Twenty, as demonstrated by the applicant's traffic study, the Lehard Drive and Mount Support Road intersection is currently underperforming and its level of service will further erode with the additional traffic that the new development project will generate. Consequently, the applicant shall work with the City of Lebanon to develop a traffic and pedestrian improvement plan for the Lehard Drive and Mount Support Road intersection and vicinity to help mitigate the anticipated increases in traffic generated by the applicant's use. The applicant shall be obligated to contribute its fair share to the cost of any proposed traffic and pedestrian improvements in amount that shall bear a rational nexus to the traffic and pedestrian impacts reasonably calculated to be caused by the applicant's use. Any financial contributions from the applicant required pursuant to the mitigation plan of action shall be paid prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Any dispute between the applicant and the city regarding the applicant's responsibilities pursuant to this condition may be appealed to the planning board. Conditions to be satisfied prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. These conditions shall be satisfied within five years of the date of the notice of action. Twenty-one, the applicant shall dedicate the completed water mains and hydrants within the complex, excluding service connections beyond the curb shut-off valves to the city for ownership and maintenance, subject to appropriate easements. Said conveyance and easements shall be approved by the city attorney and the Department of Public Works and recorded in the Grafton County Registry of Deeds prior to the issuance of a final certificate of occupancy for the project and prior to the acceptance of the utility improvements. Twenty-two, any financial contributions from the applicant contemplated pursuant to the planning board approval final mitigation plan of action shall be paid, CF, condition of approval number twenty. Twenty-three, the applicant shall work with advanced transit to identify and construct bus stop improvements within the vicinity of the project site if determined to be necessary by advanced transit. The location of any new or improved bus stops should consider sightlines for traffic, turning movements, and convenience as well as coordination of access, i.e. safe and accessible facilities. The development of the proposed improvements shall be coordinated with the Planning and Development Department and the Department of Public Works shall be implemented prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Twenty-four, the applicant shall prepare and record an open space covenant or deed restriction for the hatched area depicted on the plat titled, quote, open space exhibit, unquote, prepared by VHB, undated, VHB Project five two six two one point oh one, included with the agenda packet for the June eight, twenty twenty Planning Board meeting. The open space covenant or restriction shall be in accordance with section twelve point two of the subdivision regulations and shall be in form and content acceptable to the Planning and Development Department and the city attorney. Twenty-five, third-party engineer or design engineer inspection reports and as-built drawings provided by the applicant PDF format and CAD dot DWG format using the New Hampshire State Plane Coordinate System, including tie sheets, shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer prior to acceptance of any utility improvements by the city. Twenty-six, the impact fee calculated pursuant to condition of approval number fourteen shall be paid. Twenty-seven, all improvements depicted on the plan shall be completed and shall be constructed as depicted on the approved plan, including any modifications to the plan as may be approved by the planning board in accordance with the subdivision regulations and site plan review regulations. General conditions. Twenty-eight, the applicant shall apply to the planning board for an amendment to the approved site plan prior to constructing the reserved parking spaces identified on sheet C dash three point O, quote, layout and materials plan, unquote, prepared by VHB dated March twenty-seven, twenty twenty, revised May first, twenty twenty, VHB Project five two six two one point zero one. Twenty-nine, the applicant shall obtain an excavation permit from the Department of Public Works for any site work in the public right-of-way prior to any work in the right-of-way and construction or installation of any new driveway or driveways shall also require a driveway permit from the Department of Public Works. Thirty, all required landscape plantings shall meet the minimum size requirements for such planting set forth in section six point two point uppercase B of the Site Plan Review Regulations at the time of installation. Thirty-one, the applicant shall implement and maintain NHDES site-specific best management practices before, during, and after construction. Thirty-two, the property owner is responsible for the maintenance and operation of the stormwater management system in accord with the O and M plan and such responsibilities shall run with the land. Section six point six point uppercase H point two point lowercase B of the Site Plan Review Regulations.
Do I have a second?
Well done, Joan.
Thank you.
Can I have a second before we congratulate?
Can I have a second before we congratulate Joan?
I'll second that.
That was Laurel.
Yep.
Thank you. Now I'll congratulate Joan, that was a very long motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, this is Tim, just a, just a quick comment or suggestion, two suggestions. One, well, I had, I had struck out general condition twenty-eight because the applicant has withdrawn their request for a conditional use permit, and so there, that, in my, in my mind, that condition's now moot. And related to that would be a proposed condition eight. Let me just grab it from my screen, and I haven't finished typing it, but it would be condition, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna scroll up to where I'm, I'm gonna recommend it go, so it would be, I'm just gonna put it here for formatting purposes, hold on a second. Okay, so it'd be eight S, and so it would be, gonna highlight it, remove one parking space, this is, this is the plan amendment condition, or plan revision condition. So eight S, I'm suggesting would read, remove one parking space from the site layout in order to meet the maximum parking requirements of section six oh seven three A of the zoning ordinance, and either remove the future parking spaces depicted, I mean, I think that's probably fine, and either remove the future parking spaces, or add a note that such spaces shall require a conditional use permit per section six oh seven three B, the zoning ordinance, and, and shall also require a site plan review.
Shouldn't we just simplify it, Tim, just say, not show them?
That, that, I think that would be fine.
Yeah, I think just not show them.
Zoning spelling.
I'm not sure where, what the changes now are. We're still deleting number twenty-eight.
Correct.
Numbering.
Yes, we need to change the numbering at the end, thank you, Joan, and then we're adding this subsection.
Okay, S. So it is as Tim is showing us on the screen?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Joan, may I ask you to read that?
Okay. Okay, so number eight, S, new addition, S. Remove one parking space from the site layout in order to meet the maximum parking requirements of section six oh seven point three point capital A of the zoning ordinance, and remove the future parking spaces depicted along the spine of the access road within the interior of the site.
Laurel, do you agree with that?
Yes.
And then the deletion of section twenty-eight. Joan and Laurel, are you in agreement with that?
Joan is.
Laurel is.
And then the last two change to the numbering changes, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay, somehow I've gotten mine wrong. So general conditions will be twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, okay, and thirty-one, okay.
Do we still have thirty-one, that's what I was looking for? All right, so we're still at thirty-one.
Where's, minute ago, we were at thirty-two.
Right.
Okay.
Tim, those are your two changes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and those have been accepted by the person who moved, made the motion, the person who seconded the motion, so discussion on the motion, I'll open it up to board members.
Chair, this is Tom.
Yes, Tom.
And I would like to have an additional condition added on section four, and I'm doing this because I'm already aware of the situation that is not unlike what I talked about earlier as far as flooding caused by individual developments being approved, and eventually it caused flooding to other areas. And so what I'd like to add in for is, if in the future, storm water exceeds the ability for the current stormwater drainage because of the development and other future developments, the applicant and other applicants, or its successors, will join with the others and with the city to resolve the stormwater issues and the downstream flooding that it causes.
Tom, this is Tim, do you, do you have that typed out? If you do, you can copy and paste it into the, the chat function, and then I can copy and paste it into this draft so that people, the board members can see that, see the language.
This may be exceeding my computer capability. I would love to be able to say that I could, but I'm not sure that I can.
Tom, this is Laurel.
Hey, Laurel.
And Tim, would it be appropriate to add at the end of that addition to the satisfactory for review by the planning board, so that there's some process by which somebody can, you know, look at the remediation efforts and say, yes, those work? Maybe it's not the planning board, maybe it's another body.
You know, as, as I'm looking at this, I'm kind of laughing, because actually, the situation that I'm referring to was one in which the city advised, actually, the, the person who was harmed by this, to not only sue the people who had created the development, but also to sue the city planning board, so. I, I'm not, you know, I think it's appropriate that the city planning board would then be the ones to review it, but I just want to make sure that, that whatever is happening on Mount Support Road, we're not creating a future situation where somebody's going to be faced with a significant amount of water in their, in their business, or in their, their yard, or in their homes, because each individual project appears to be in itself a non-contributor, but when you add all of the projects together, they become a significant contributor.
So, I guess, Tim, could you type as Tom dictates?
Sure, I can do that, yep, just, just, you know, go a little bit slower than you did, but I can certainly add it in.
Well, usually I'm referred to as Indiana slow, so I should be able to do this very slowly for you. Okay, so it would be an additional condition in, in section four.
Okay.
And it would be something to the effect of, in the future, if storm water exceeds the ability for the current stormwater.
Hang on a second, slow down, slow down, slow down.
Yeah, and if I, if there are typos, I'll, I'll correct them at the end, so just let me, just let me transcribe here. In, in the future, if storm water exceeds.
The ability of current stormwater drainage because of this development.
Fast.
And other future developments, the applicant and its successors will join with will join with the city, no, excuse me, join with the others and with the city to resolve these stormwater issues and downstream flooding. And in similar respects, it's not unlike number twenty, what we did with the traffic.
Do you want to use the word infrastructure instead of drainage?
Infrastructure's fine with me.
Stormwater infrastructure?
Can you just read that one thing about the applicant or any other? Where was that?
Right, the reason that I have that, and we've actually talked about this in the, in the development committee, technically, if somebody builds something and somebody else buys that property later, the, the successors then are liable under the same conditions that the original builder had.
Yeah, no, it's the one before that, it's the other future developments. I just, I, I question whether any particular developer can be held responsible for future projects that might arise.
Well, in some respects, we're already doing that, though, with the traffic situation on Mount Support Road, so it, it's not unlike what we're saying as far as, as developments continue to take place on that road, that the traffic problems that it's causing, those developments are going to have to help satisfy the, you know, the mitigation of that traffic problem, and I want to ensure that that same situation exists with stormwater.
Okay, Tom, could I suggest the word adjacent, other future adjacent developments? I think that's what you're getting at.
This is Kathy, and I, I, I'm hearing what Laurel says because, just imagine for a second that the problem with the excess stormwater was entirely the fault of an adjacent development. It shouldn't be this applicant's responsibility to solve. Should it?
No, but I.
If you're asking me, having seen the situation that exists in this other location, each property individually was added on, and each property individually created additional problems to the original situation, so I just think that we're looking at a number of properties that are being developed along this road, and each one of them are going to contribute water that eventually is going to end up in that wetlands, and that wetland eventually contributes water downstream from that location, and people are going to end up facing whatever that water is. So I don't have a direct answer for that, but I think that having some means to be able to say that as, as these storm problems continue to develop, there has to be some way that those properties that end up being flooded because of what's taking place at this current time and on future developments needs to be resolved.
Well, I hear you, because you're saying this development and other future adjacent developments, which means that they would have to be contributing, I guess.
Counselor Winnie?
Yes.
Jim?
I certainly agree with, with where Tom is headed here. I have no idea if, you know, how sort of enforceable it is, or I think traffic is somewhat different in that you can probably more easily say, you know, this project has so many people living in it, and that's where all the cars are coming from. Stormwater, I have, I have no idea if that is something that can be measured the same way, if, you know, how do you, how do you determine if, if a particular project is sort of the cause of it or not? Because there's, I think, a number of other factors, so I, I agree with Tom that there should be some way to, to work something in there, I just don't know from a legal standpoint how you do that. Because every, every project, as someone posted in the comments, every project has to include, include some type of stormwater mitigation, and so, you know, if someone's system is faulty, then that's kind of easy to identify, but I, I'm just not sure how to, how to phrase it, and I don't know, again, from kind of a legal standpoint, if, if this would stand up or not.
Well, my, this is Laurel, Mr. Chair. In my view, I also agree with you, Tom, that, you know, this is the right direction in which to be going, but in my view, it's more at the feet of the planning board that has the power to approve or deny future adjacent developments, if this, should this problem arise. And so, you know, going again back to what Counselor Winnie just said, I like, I like the idea, I like the, the impetus behind it, I just, I'm struggling to find the wording that would adequately address it.
This is Kathy, and I think it needs to be limited because the phrase downstream flooding, I mean, are you talking about heater road, or, you know, like how far down, you know? It, it's.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is David Brooks.
Yes, David.
I think, again, I, I, I think the, the intent is good, I think the enforcement is going to be extremely difficult, because this was just pointed out, or has been pointed out, every property has its own onsite mitigation. The obligation of each applicant is to comply with the AOT requirements and with the board's own site stormwater requirements in section six point six. If they're doing that, they are in compliance with their obligation. Exactly how far downstream you measure, I mean, if somebody gets flooded in, in Connecticut, is that a result of one of these properties? I mean, that's all downstream.
Yeah, it's.
So I just, I, I'm very, I'm, I like the intent, I'm just concerned about the enforceability.
Well, it would at least, it would bring it back to the city for discussion with the, the applicant and immediate abutters.
Well, and that's. I mean, and that also is a little problematic for me, because who is the city? I mean, is it the city council, is it the planning board, I mean?
It'd be public works.
Well, then if it's that, then it needs to say that, I think. I think there's, there's no such thing as the amorphous, the city.
Yeah, and the, the future could be a hundred and fifty years.
Somebody please mute, somebody hearing background noise. Thank you.
Where is the language for the traffic study agreement?
That's, that's much more specific, that addresses Lehay and.
Traffic, and, and traffic is necessarily measured offsite, where the drainage is measured onsite specifically.
Maybe, are those our regulations, our, our site regulations that, you know, like, maybe we need to look at those or something, not for this applicant, but in the future, if they're not sufficiently strong.
Well, we can do that another time, I agree, Kathy, but.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Just try, let's go back and see what we can do to Tom's language.
You could, you could just lift language from the traffic thing and, and make some changes that would make it appropriate.
If you have that language. Here.
Is there any way, Tim, to, who, cut and paste the language from the traffic item right below what you just typed, that Tom dictated? Yeah. It's really small.
No, I'm not sure what you're trying to achieve there, Tim, you lost us.
Sorry, I, I hit something that I didn't need to hit, actually, but.
We can't see it. We can't see it. It don't-
Can you see anything?
Yeah.
No, we're good. We're good. So if we were to delete, I'm just playing around with Tom's sentence, for it to delete if, in the future, which is too broad, and just replace those first four words with should, stormwater accedibility of current infrastructure because of this development and adjacent developments. The applicant and his successors will join with the others and the City Department of Public Works to resolve these stormwater issues.
What's missing from this, of course, is the contributed fair share of the cost.
Well, isn't that implied in resolving it?
Yeah, you can't imply.
No. If you don't imply it, no one will infer it. I mean, I guess I'm asking this of David and Tim. Can we make this request? The request for the traffic study was made after kind of due deliberation by the city council and others.
Well, just one, this is Tim, just one difference is, and I had to step away for a second. This may have already been mentioned, but here, there is no, the applicant has addressed the stormwater impacts from their development in accordance with the, with state and local regulations. Whereas with the traffic, there is an impact that isn't being addressed by the current plan, by the applicant's plan. Whereas with the stormwater, the applicant's plan does address the stormwater impact. So that's one difference to keep in mind. David, you were going to say something?
The applicant is addressing the stormwater impact of its own development.
Right. I was going to say this, I was going to say the same thing that Tim did, that we have a study that shows the traffic at the intersection is failing. We don't have a, you know, anything could happen at any time. I mean, it's very hard to speculate about, you know, what could happen in the future. Hard to know.
Counselor Winnie?
Yes, Jim?
I think this is probably more complicated than we can solve here. I feel like it should, I feel like it's probably not something we can figure out currently. I think it's something we might need some legal counsel advice on and some other folks to look at. I would suggest that we not put this in this particular application, but look at it for, in a more planned way, at figuring out how to do this sort of legally and safely and fairly, because it feels a little bit rushed and culled together to me.
And it doesn't have any time constraint, like, you know, this could be 100 years from now. The way it's written.
I still want it to get lost because I think it's really important.
Oh, I absolutely agree that it's important. I just, and I also don't want it to get lost. I think it should definitely be something that we look at, and it's a good thought by Tom to bring it up. I'm just not sure that we can address it right now.
So what would be the process of addressing it in a more deliberative fashion and consulting with others?
I don't even know what that is.
A work session.
Right.
A work session.
Chair Garland?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe, I'm thinking along the lines of Counselor Winnie that because we haven't had this kind of language in other motions, I don't think we should try to craft it now, and I agree that this might need vetting by our legal counsel. And this is exactly the kind of thing that, or one of the things that the Development Regulations Subcommittee is working on. And I do believe that a lot, a number of us have been giving ideas and changes to the planning staff that are things that we need to do during our second meeting of the month. And that's exactly why I keep pushing for the second meeting of the month being available for us to have time to do what I call housekeeping. This is housekeeping. We need to figure out, there's exactly this sort of thing. But I would say because we haven't done it before, that trying to put it in here, and I would, my question to that discussion would be, how have we dealt with this in the past? Because we have had cases where water has flowed off, you know, from one area and blown out. I mean, look at what happened to Slaton Hill and other places. And so my suggestion is that we add this to the planning department's list of things that the board would like to have information on and discuss.
Yeah, I agree. Much as I would like to see something like this in here, I just don't think we're ready.
Tom, would you agree to withdraw this idea?
Well, I will agree to let it pass for right now, but I think it's an idea that needs to be discussed and we'll need to work on it for this and the future. But you can remove it from today.
All right, thank you. I think it's an excellent point, but clearly we're not ready for it.
Chair, this is, I have a question. Back in this section where it's up towards the beginning, where it's talking about the performance bond, and it lists the criteria here, but not limited to, I just saw it there that, for all required improvements, both on and offsite, including but not limited to. And then it lists some things, and obviously it says but not limited to. But I would think that one of the important things in there should be stormwater drainage improvements, because they're substantial on this site.
David, this is a question from Laurel to David Brooks.
Yes. Hang on a second, Laurel. Let's deal with Kathy's first, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Tim?
Stormwater, what, drainage improvements?
Yeah, I mean, I think stormwater improvements is fine, but you could say stormwater infrastructure improvements.
So are you making that change, Tim?
Yes.
So Joan, you made the motion. Do you agree?
Is this, that's the only thing, is it's just going to add that water, add that, those two words?
Yes. I mean, they could have been included before, just presumed to be included, but I just thought listing them because they're so substantial is important.
I'm guessing, yes.
And Laurel?
I'm scrolling back and forth here. So this is for David and I guess the Subcommittee. But under RSA 67456, which deals with regulatory powers and flood hazards, there is existing legislation that empowers municipalities to adopt fluvial erosion hazard ordinances. And it sounds to me like that's exactly what this might be. And so my question to you, David, or maybe to you, Jim, is, does the city of Lebanon have such an ordinance?
We do have, you said 674:56?
Just a second.
Yeah, yes.
67456, yeah.
Yeah, that's flood hazards. The city does have a flood hazard ordinance. It is connected to the Mascoma River, so there are no documented flood zones this far up away from Mount Support. I'm sorry, this far up Mount Support away from the Mascoma River.
Does it have to be connected to the Mascoma, does it have to be rewritten if it were connected to some other place?
Well, the National Flood Insurance Program, the FEMA maps, those are all tied to the Mascoma, for Lebanon, anyway, they are tied to the Mascoma River and its major tributaries. Obviously, it could flood anywhere that it can rain. But in terms of documented flood hazard areas and the areas where the city's flood hazard ordinance is applicable, that only applies within those documented flood zones, the 100-year flood zone, for example. So again, it's, there's no 100-year flood zones up this far away from the river. But that doesn't mean it can't flood if there's a major, you know, if we get a 500-year storm or 100-year storm.
But there is a Subcommittee looking at the RSA's, right?
There's a Subcommittee looking at the board's regulations, site plan and subdivision regulations.
So, I mean, as I'm reading this, these flood hazard, I mean, I don't want to take up time this evening, but it seems to me that there's, there is the possibility to do what Tom is wanting to do under state law, and what it would require that, would the city adopt its own ordinance. But the city is currently able to do that under state law.
All right, I think that's noted, Laurel.
We need Laurel to okay that addition.
That's what I was trying to get to. So Kathy has suggested a change to Section 3 of the motion. Joan has agreed with it. Laurel, you seconded the motion. Do you agree with it?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. All right, do we have any further discussion on the motion? If not, I will start asking for votes. So this is voting in favor of this admittedly very long motion. Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Joan?
Joan votes yes.
Jim?
Counselor Winnie votes aye.
I vote in favor. And Tom?
I'm going to vote no.
And Tom votes no.
And I want to, understood that I, there are many things about this project that I really like, but until this one issue can be resolved, I just can't vote in favor.
All right, understood. So we have five in favor and one against. And this motion is approved. Thank you all.
Chair?
Yes?
I make another question?
Yes, please. Thank you very much, Joan.
Joan Monroe moves that the Lebanon Planning Board authorizes the chair to sign the plat for trustees of Dartmouth College, property owner and Michael Student Living LLC, applicant, number PB 202007 SPR, titled Proposed Multifamily Housing Project 401 Mount Support Road, Lebanon, Grafton County, New Hampshire, prepared by VHB, dated February 10, 2020, revised March 18, 2020, VHB Project 52621.01, as such plan may be amended in accordance with the board's approval date of June 22, 2020.
I have a second for the motion.
I'll second it.
That was Laurel. Thank you. Any discussion? Tom? In favor?
I'll go in favor.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
Laurel?
Laurel votes yes.
Joan?
Joan votes yes.
Jim?
Counselor Winnie votes aye.
And I vote in favor, and so the motion is unanimous. All right, thank you, all the members of the Dartmouth team and anyone in the public. This is a long and fruitful discussion. Now-
Who's back?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, hi.
Thank you.
Long time no see.
Actually, Mr. Chair, may I say something?
You may absolutely say something.
Thank you. I just was saying, I was here listening the whole time. I, you know, I don't, I want to just put something out there. Given the time, how lengthy this discussion was, how complicated a discussion it was, and in detail, I wonder if it's worth discussing whether or not it's fair to go into depth into the applicants that are on the rest of the agenda.
Well, that was my next point, was we're now at 9:15. Either we continue the ADIMAB to a future meeting, or we vote to continue this meeting until much later. I'm quite happy to continue the meeting to deal with ADIMAB. I think that would be the right thing to do, as they've had to wait through all of this. But that's up to other members of the board.
This is Kathy, and I can, I mean, we're never going to have a second meeting to do workshops if we don't get through a very heavy schedule.
And Mr. Chair, this is Matt again. Just given the reality of these virtual meetings and how my setup has to be in my house, I really can't participate past 10:00 PM.
I'm not sure-
Just as an FYI.
I understand. Can I have an indication? Unfortunately, I can't see heads nod or one way or another, so I don't know if people are prepared to stay later.
Chair?
Yes.
Why don't we take, do a motion to continue, and we'll see how people vote?
That's a good idea. So how about 10 o'clock?
I'll make a motion to continue until 9:45. There can always be another one.
I'll second that.
So that was Joan and Laurel, correct?
Correct.
So 9:45. Tom?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to vote no.
Matt?
Matt votes yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Jim?
Counselor Winnie votes nay. I may have to step away.
Understandable.
Well, just signal to us when you do, and I'm in favor. All right, so we've just passed a motion to continue this meeting till 9:45. So we will move to the ADIMAB discussion. And I don't believe there's any, anything from the applicant. Tim, you can correct me. I'm just looking for my notes here.
No, I think the applicant wrapped up their discussion. I think staff gave some comments. I mean, if I recall correctly, we're at the, we're at a point where it'd be appropriate for the board to begin asking some questions.
Right. So let's start there. Who has questions about this application?
Do we have something on the screen?
Kevin, Kevin, are you there?
I am. Yes, thank you.
Do you want to throw something up, or should I?
I'm happy to.
And Mr. Chair, this is Matt.
Yes, Matt.
I haven't been able to talk in so long. I feel like I'll start off. I guess my only question for the applicant that I have is, you know, looking at the plan and the waivers, I guess, does the applicant feel that their employees currently get along fine without a sidewalk on that very short road?
Thank you, Matt. This is Kevin Ordin with Engineering Ventures. And one thing I neglected to mention last time, but if you can see my screen.
Yes, we can, Kevin.
There's a parcel to the right-hand side, which is 37 Lafayette, which is owned by the same owner. There's an agreement to allow for parking. There's a lease agreement that was approved by the planning board a few years ago. And that parcel has, as you can see, walks across it, including out to Lafayette. And Lafayette does have a sidewalk, which is frequented by walkers throughout the day in Centerra. So I do think the applicant is satisfied with that connection to the Centerra sidewalk connectivity. And I also know that the applicant, ADIMAB, has taken great lengths to landscape the frontage in front of 7 Lucen, so that, you know, the addition of a sidewalk there on the dead end would result in, you know, removal of existing landscaping and trees, so they prefer not to. Thank you.
I'm going to jump in here because Tim said there weren't any staff comments. Brian, are you still with us?
I'm here.
The staff memo for the June 16th meeting had a lengthy paragraph entitled Engineering Public Works. And there were several points in there that were- at that point incomplete, and I need to ask you, have those all been completed?
Uh, yes, they have. Um, the applicant has revised the stormwater management design to address what I was identifying as a seasonal high water table issue. To, to the best of their ability based on the site conditions they're faced with. Uh, we, we've spoken with the uh engineer record more than once, I think twice. And um, talked through the issues and um, I'm comfortable with the way they're proposing their design currently.
All right, thank you for that. That was the only thing I had from a prior meeting. Back to the um, board members.
Chair, Chair Garland?
Yes, Joan.
Monroe, I have only one question of Mr. Warden. Um, and I was, it's about the, the culvert under the road. Is that something that that your applicant can like pay for? I, I can't think. Can you educate me?
Certainly. Um, the, the culvert, I'll just change to the next plan, is under the proposed access drive. And um, and absolutely, um, that will be part of the construction that's located here. And uh, that will be, uh, as requested by the Conservation Commission. Um, will be constructed as they requested and the applicant will pay for that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments from board members? All right, I'm going to open this to anyone from the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this application? We carried this application over from the first meeting to make sure that the public had an opportunity to speak. I do not hear anyone from the public. So I'm going to close the public hearing. And we're going to move to the site plan waivers.
But Mr. Chair, this is Tim. I think, I think we had um, talked about how it, it probably does make sense to to uh deliberate and make a decision on the waiver request prior to closing the public hearing. Um, just in the event that a waiver is denied, and so then you could get, you could give the applicant an opportunity to address that, the denial of the waiver request. Uh, but assuming they're all, uh, all the waiver requests are granted, then, then it would make sense at that point to, to close the public hearing and then enter it to, to enter into deliberation.
All right, and under advice from the staff, I will rescind what I just said and leave the public hearing open until we're done with waivers. So as we did with Dartmouth, my suggestion is we treat the waivers as a a block of five unless someone on the board objects to that.
Could we see them on the screen, please?
Tim, I think I'll uh see.
Yes.
Sharing.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, you have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm happy to make a motion here and then we can have a discussion once uh it's motioned if someone seconds it.
All right, why don't you have, you haven't had a chance to make a motion tonight. Why don't you have a go?
Alrighty, I move that the Lebanon Planning Board approve waivers for the application of ADIMAB LLC. Number PB twenty twenty dash fourteen dash SPR from the following sections of the Site Plan Review Regulations. Sections five point one E fifteen, the uh, the plan shall depict existing trees over twelve inches in diameter. Measured four point five feet above the ground surface and within twenty five feet of the disturbed area must be counted and shown on the plan if included towards fulfilling the landscaping requirements. All calculations for square footage of perimeter landscaping shall be shown. Section six point two B site perimeter landscaping requirements. Section six point two D one landscaping around buildings shall be provided to a minimum width of ten feet and planned with trees, shrubs and ground cover appropriate to the architecture in order to buffer parking areas. Define entrances, provide foundation planting and soften large expanses of walls or long roof lines. Section six point five B four, all projects proposed for blah 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 shall install sidewalks along street frontages. Section six point five B five, minimum access requirements shall include a fifty foot turning radius and twenty two foot fire lanes at the rear of buildings.
Do I have a second for this motion?
Monroe seconds.
Thank you, Joan. And now I open it up to discussion. I don't think there's any discussion on the last one. This is the fire one that we've been waiving for other similar projects.
We're assuming that the fire department is okay with this, right?
Correct. I don't think we're assuming. I think that's in the documentation, Kathy.
Okay.
I don't hear any comments, any discussion. I know, Matt, you asked, or someone asked a question about sidewalks. It's in there and then the rest of it is the space that is already occupies. So if there's no discussion. Then I will call for the vote.
You close the public meeting?
No, I'll close it after the, the vote on. Thank you. I'll close it after we've done with the waivers and then before we get into the motion to approve the project. So Matt, you've not been here to vote. I will start with you.
Uh, Matt votes yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Laurel? Laurel, are you there?
Laurel, you're muted.
There you go.
Laurel?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yes.
Laurel votes yes.
Thank you. Joan?
Monroe votes yes.
Jim?
Counselor Winnie votes aye.
Uh, I vote aye and Tom.
Tom votes yes.
So that is unanimous. All right, um. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this point in time?
Maybe it was seven to zero now. Matt's back.
Yes, it was seven. All right, I think I just. Yes. And I did get a message from Gregorio saying that he is traveling until the end of the month, so he is clearly not here tonight. So what's happened to nothing? So I do not hear anyone from the public. I'm closing the public hearing. Now we move into deliberation. Does anybody? That's something we want to discuss before we move to the motion. If not, I'll ask Matt to make the motion. We can always discuss it after it is made.
Sure. Um, I move that the Lebanon Planning Board approve the application of ADIMAB LLC for site plan review of a proposed twenty seven thousand three hundred square foot addition to an existing industrial building. Together with associated parking utilities, landscaping access and other related site improvements at Seven Lucian Drive, Tax map ten, lot eleven, plot twenty six hundred. Zone um Industrial Light, number PB twenty twenty dash fourteen dash SPR. As shown on a plan subtitled ADIMAB LLC Building and Parking Expansion. Prepared by Engineering Ventures PC dated May fifteenth twenty twenty. EV number nineteen five eight four. Fifteen sheets, including any and all submissions and testimony provided for and during the public hearing with the following conditions. Conditions to be satisfied prior to application for a building permit. One, the boundary line adjustment plat approved by the planning board on April twenty seventh twenty twenty. Number PB twenty twenty dash twelve dash BLA shall be recorded pursuant to any inconformance with the notice of action. Two, the applicant shall continue working with the Department of Public Works to revise the drainage plans to the reasonable satisfaction of the city engineer. Three, prior to the start of any construction activities on the property for which construction inspection is required pursuant to this decision or any applicable ordinance or code. The applicant shall provide two revised plan sets depicting the following revisions to the satisfaction of the Planning and Development Department and the city engineer as follows. A, any changes made pursuant to conditions of approval number two. B, incorporate all other revised plan sheets and changes submitted during the course of the hearing and update all other plan sheets as necessary to reflect the changes. Four, the applicant shall provide a digital copy of the plan set and any revised application materials depicting any changes made pursuant to condition of approval number two to the satisfaction of the Planning and Development Department and the city engineer. The digital, digital copy of the plan shall use a PDF format for archival purposes. Five, prior to the start of any construction activities on the property for which construction inspection is required pursuant to this decision or any applicable ordinance or code. The applicant shall schedule and hold a pre-building permit application meeting with the planning department, city building inspectors, city engineer, Department of Public Works and fire department in order to help streamline the building permit review process. Six, the applicant shall obtain approval from the city council or the city manager's office for the any additional water and or sewer flows in accordance with the applicable chapter one thirty six and one eighty two of the city code. Seven, prior to the start of any construction activities on the property. The applicant shall obtain or update, if appropriate, any required state approvals, including but not limited to the following. A NHDES wetland impact permit if necessary, B NHDES alteration of terrain permit if necessary. C NHDES sewer connection permit if necessary. Eight, all outstanding engineering review fees shall be paid in full as required by section four point seventy one of the Site Plan Review Regulations. Conditions to be satisfied prior to the issuance of a building permit. Nine, the development shall be subject to city Lebanon impact fees. Pursuant to section two thirteen of the zoning ordinance, the impact fee shall be calculated at the time of building permit issuance based on the impact fee schedule adopted on August thirteenth twenty eighteen. In accordance with RSA six seventy four thirty nine, the approved site plan shall be exempt from any future changes in impact fees and methodology for five years from the date of approval. However, any building permits which are issued after the end of that five year period shall be fully subject to whatever impact fees and methodology are in effect at the time of building permit issuance. Ten, the city shall retain the services of, of an independent third party inspector for which the applicant shall be responsible for all inspection fees related to the construction and installation of it on and off site roadways. Parking sidewalks, water and sewer utilities, storm drainage and erosion control in accordance with chapters one thirty six and one eighty two of the city code and section eight point two of the Site Plan Review Regulations. The applicant shall provide funding for inspection services in a form and amount acceptable to the city and shall sign a water and sewer extension and inspection agreement in accordance with chapter one thirty six and one eighty two of the city code. Eleven, construction or installation of any new driveway shall require a driveway permit and excavation permit from the city. Twelve, edge of disturbance fencing shall be installed and maintained before and during any site work to be verified by the city engineer or city's third party inspector on site. Thirteen, all water and sewer fees shall be paid as set forth in city code chapter sixty eight. Conditions to be satisfied prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Fourteen, third party engineer or design engineer inspection reports and as-built drawings provided by the applicant PDF format and CAD DWG format using the New Hampshire State Plane Coordinates System. Including tie sheets shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer prior to acceptance of any utility improvements by the city. Fifteen, the impact fee calculated pursuant to condition approval of number eight shall be paid. Sixteen, all improvements depicted on the plan shall be completed and shall be constructed as depicted on the approved plan. Including any modifications to the plan as may be approved by the planning board in accordance with the subdivision regulations and site plan review regulations. General conditions. Seventeen, the applicant shall obtain an excavation permit from the Department of Public Works for any site work in the public right of way prior to any work in the right of way. Eighteen, all required landscaping, any landscape planting shall meet the minimum size requirements for such planting set forth in section six point two B of the Site Plan Review Regulations at the time of installation. Nineteen, the applicant shall implement and maintain NHDES site specific best management practices before, during and after construction. Twenty, the property owner is responsible for the maintenance and operation of the stormwater management system system in accord with the O and M plan and such responsibilities shall run with the land. Section six point six H two B of the Site Plan Review Regulations.
Joan seconds the motion.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you, Matt, for the motion. Any discussion? All right, I will ask for the votes. I'll start with Laurel.
Laurel votes yes.
Joan?
Joan votes yes.
Jim?
Counselor Winnie votes aye and I'll be stepping away after this vote.
All right, thank you. Uh, I vote in favor. Tom?
Tom votes in favor.
Matt?
Matt votes aye.
And Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
So that's unanimous with seven.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, we still have fifteen minutes, uh, so I am going to move to our next item, which is committee reports. Um, I would remind members that we still have vacancies where we don't have any representation on the Heritage Commission and the Upper Valley Transportation Management Association. Anyone is interested in either of those, I would very much welcome um your uh proposing to join those committees. We also have some other vacancies. Um, secondly, could I ask Matt to give us a very brief update on your development subcommittee?
Sure, thank you, Chair. Um, I think the main headline for the committee is that we've put in quite a, quite, quite, quite many hours, I'd say, over the last two months. Um. And have a long ways to go. Um. We, I think, probably, I'm not sure when it will happen, but we, we're kind of piecemealing some changes. So the, I think, a section of our regulations um with recommendations or notes um that staff has kind of taken from our meetings will come to the, the whole board for discussion sometime soon while, while the subcommittee continues on reviewing um changes and, and other, other alterations. So we're moving forward. We are gonna be bringing, as I said, some alterations to the whole board soon. Um, but the, the look, we are still actively looking at what needs to be done. And I would say that, you know, if any individual board member who's not on the subcommittee has recommendations to, you know, please contact the staff or any member on the subcommittee um for, so we can kind of incorporate your ideas.
Good. Any questions for Matt? I presume that you still have thresholds somewhere on your future plan?
I, I, yeah, I do believe so. Um, we're, we're kind of starting and um. Yeah, I, I, yeah, we're, we're getting there.
Okay, great. Does anybody have a specific committee report to make at this time? All right, then I'm gonna move to other business and this is a review of a minor alteration to a project that we've already approved at one ninety five Mechanic Street. Um, I will ask Tim to give a brief explanation, but um, uh, the point is that uh, we don't need to take a formal vote unless somebody requests it.
It's been provided. Um, well. Um. Dave, David and I reviewed the language today in the Site Plan Review Regulations nine point one uh that governs uh minor changes to approved site plans prior to the issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy. And that's, that's the stage where we're at with this uh project one ninety five Mechanic Street mixed use building that was approved in November of two thousand nineteen. Uh, and the applicant is, is proposing some minor changes. Um, the, it's actually section nine point two, sorry, of the Site Plan Review Regulations that controls and um. What it says is that the applicant, any board member, any person agreed, may make a written request for an approval under this section to be reviewed by the full board. Uh, the board shall act on the request and that is the request to approve. Um, to approve the um uh, sorry, to, to review the, the change by the full board. That, that's what they need to request, to act on within a reasonable amount of time. Uh, such a determination shall be considered administrative. The board by, by majority vote shall either affirm the approval of the minor alteration or shall require the owner or applicant to spin a modification request under section nine point one. So I, I'm sorry for going through that uh right now uh uh, over the meeting here, but I, I do think that seems to suggest that, that there, there should be a vote. So that's what I read was section nine point two C and, and I I, I, we may have been a little bit inconsistent about this in the past, but, but reading it right now, it, it, it does seem to suggest that if there's a minor modification, such as the one that's, that's uh in your agenda packet tonight, that a, a, a vote uh to sort of approve that minor, minor modification is, is warranted. So um, if, if, if you like, just, I can just take twenty seconds and explain uh exactly what the modification is. So if you look at, um, if, if you just take a look at the first plan sheet that's included with the, the agenda packet for this item. Um, that, that's one of the plant, that's basically the site layout. basically the site layout, the approved site layout for this project. And, oh, sorry, well, I actually have it on the screen. So I'm hovering with the hand icon here. I'm hovering over the, what was approved to be a, it's about a five-foot landscaping strip on the east side of the approved building. And then here, I'm hovering over a 20, I think it's a 20-foot wide access, drive access that provides access from the front of the lot to the rear of the lot where you went, where there's some rear parking spaces, and then you can enter into the underground parking or the structured parking underneath the building. And then on the east side of the drive aisle, there is this repetitive block feature, which is a symbol for retaining wall. And the applicant, following site plan approval, put the project out to bid, and it turns out this planned retaining wall, which is quite lengthy, is extraordinarily expensive and really makes the project not viable, is our understanding. And so they engineered around this issue and came up with what is the second page, second sheet in your agenda packet. What they've done is to shift this drive aisle directly against the building. So they're eliminating that five-foot landscaping strip, but they are gaining it, if you will, on the other side of the aisle, which will give them the space to grade the property up to the American Legion property instead of having to build this very expensive retaining wall. So it doesn't result in, there's sort of a net, there's a neutral impact on the amount of landscaping on the property, but they do need to push it over to the side of the building so that there's not that landscaping strip on the eastern side. But we think that's covered by the waiver request that the board had granted originally as part of the approval for this project. So that, those are the changes. We think they're relatively minor, and I think we would ask the board for a vote under 92, 92C of the Site Plan Review Regulations to approve this minor amendment request.
All right, I need to stop you, Tim, because we're running out of time. Joan, can I have a motion to extend again?
This is Kathy. I can make that motion till 10 o'clock.
Oh, sorry.
Joan?
I'll second Kathy's motion. I was muted.
All right. So any discussion? We're now extending till 10. Oh, Tom?
Tom votes okay.
Matt?
Aye.
Kathy?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Jim has left, and I vote, so that's 6-0, so we're extended till 10. All right.
A quick question for Tim.
Ask who has questions.
Does that removal of the retaining wall and a slope add stormwater coming down that driveway?
Brian, are you still with us?
I'm here, yeah.
Can you give your thoughts on that?
Minor change. The landscape island, I don't remember how that was graded before, but this stormwater off the slope that's being proposed would flow into the driveway and down toward the stormwater inlet at the stormwater management underground, stormwater management system in that area, yeah. So I don't think there's any increase because there's no new impervious area, or at least not any appreciable new impervious area. I don't think there's any. So I wouldn't expect there to be an increase in peak flow to the system. And the only difference would be how it gets conveyed to that system.
Other comments or questions?
Monroe?
Yes.
Has a question for Brian. So removing that wall is not going to make anything unstable? You think that it's okay?
It looks like three-to-one slopes, yeah. So actually, 2.1 to 1, 2.1 to 1. So they're a little steeper. They may have to put some treatment on that. I don't know whether it would be stone or some reinforced slope materials. If it's a cut, it's more stable, which I think it is a cut, so I'm comfortable enough with that.
Okay. And then I also have the question. There was mention of the landscaping plan needing to be updated, but then we did the waiver for the landscaping around the buildings? So that's saying yes, and it's sort of saying no.
Well, you can only grant a waiver from the, this is Tim, you can only grant a waiver from the Site Plan Review Regulations in the context of a public hearing. And so if the applicant had, so if the applicant's original plan had met the landscaping around buildings requirement, and is now coming back with a plan that no longer meets that in some respect, I think they would have to come back to the planning board for a public hearing in order to evaluate a waiver request. But the board already granted a waiver request based on the prior plan, and so I don't think that if the board is otherwise agreeable to these changes, that the elimination of that five-foot-wide landscaping strip on the east side of the building itself requires a public hearing.
Were there plantings in that five-foot strip?
There may have been, and those are going to have to be, this is, they're going to have to come back to you again with, in this format, with an updated landscaping plan.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Yes, Matt.
Oh, Tim, did you want to finish?
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion, and we can, again, if someone seconds it, we can chat. I'm going to move that we approve, or, yeah, I guess that's the right language, that we approve this minor alteration of the prior approved site plan.
Monroe seconds.
Thank you, Joan. And discussion? So, Tim, I understand that they will be coming back.
Yes, ideally, the board would have had all the changes tonight, but the applicant was, I think it's, I think it's safe to say that they were leery about preparing an updated landscaping plan if the board didn't sort of approve or go for this revision. So they're doing it in a two-step process.
All right, that makes sense. Any discussion? Any comments, discussion? If not, I will start the voting. Matt?
Aye.
Kathy?
Yeah, I'm fine, as long as they have to come back with the landscaping.
Laurel?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
I am in favor. And Tom?
Tom's in favor.
And that is six to nothing. So that is unanimous, given that Tim Winnie has left the meeting. All right, thank you all for that. Moving right along, approval of the minutes of June 8. Do we have any, again, typos? I urge you to send those to David, but do we have any significant changes?
Monroe does. Well.
Joan.
Okay, not significant, but I do think they're important. On page six, line nine, it's describing the crosswalk and a bus stop with shelter and crosswalk were added, and I think it should say at the main entrance. Okay. And then on page eight, line 22, Ms. Romano expressed concern that, it says here, but I think she meant there. T-H-E-R-E?
Yes.
Okay.
Catch.
Okay. And on page nine, line seven, it says that residents would not use cars during week, and I think it should say the week, because otherwise it might mean during weekends. So stay during the week. Okay.
All right, thank you for those typos.
I didn't get the second one.
So it was on, just had it. Page eight, line 22, it's a typo. It shouldn't be T-H-E-R rather than H-E-R-E.